Appropriations Committee, we're going to get started. We're reconvening now for the Police Department. Couple of quick housekeeping items. So let me introduce my colleagues first. To my immediate left is Vice Chairman of the Committee, Councilman Leon Pinkett from the 7th District. I'm sorry, my name is Eric Costello from the 11th District. I chair the committee. To his left is City Council President Bernard C. Jack Young. Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District, member of the committee. Councilman Brandon Scott, 2nd District, member of the committee. To my right, Vice President of the Council, Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton from the 6th District, member of the committee. Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District. Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District, member of the committee. Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District. Councilman Bill Henry, 4th District, member of the committee. Also joining us, Councilman Zeke Cohen, 1st District. From Council President Young's office, on the back, we have Rebecca Tabb, who is lawyer for the City Council. We also have Michael Huber, Director of Economic Development for Council President Young, representing Mayor Katherine Pugh. From her Office of Government Relations is Karen Stokes, Poetry Deal, and Karan Banks. We have the city's Budget Director with us, Bob Senemay. These hearings are televised online. They're being streamed online on charmTV.TV. They're also on live TV right now on Comcast Channel 25. If and when you're testifying, please make sure you're talking directly into the mic like this. You should be able to hear it. If you're not, I may interrupt you abruptly but politely and ask you to make sure you speak into the mic. If you have cellphones on you, please turn them to off, silent, or vibrate. We have the Police Department here. We're going to call a very small audible for the first 15 to 20 minutes. And that was because a discussion came up about special events. We know that touches a couple of agencies. One of those is the Department of Transportation. We know Police Department's involved in that as well, as well as the Sheriff's Department. I do not believe we have anyone from the Sheriff's Department here with us today. Okay, that's fine. So from the Department of Transportation Director, if you could kindly come up with your staff, just say your name and your position and introduce your staff, and then you guys can all grab a seat right here.
Michelle Pouchelle, Director of Baltimore City Department of Transportation. Marshal Toby Goodwin over Traffic Services.
In the mic.
And Tim Knight, who's over our Right-of-Way Office.
Okay, and we're going to assume that Toby's taking the lead on testifying on this tonight?
Yes.
Or Tim is?
Exactly.
Tim is. Sounds good. If two of you could please take a seat, and one of you remain standing, that would be perfect. Thank you. Mr. Gillis, who do you have here from Police Department to talk about special events?
Chairman Colonel Smith, and then Major Corbett.
Thank you, gentlemen. So why don't we put... One of you gentlemen can grab this seat right up here with the laptop, and the other one, if you don't mind standing, or if you've got room. Or can... Sure. Can you swap over there for a minute? Sir, you can come right up here. Yep. Okay. We're waiting on that, gentlemen. Okay, so we oftentimes on the Council hear about special event permits that end up having issues for a variety of reasons. One of the most frustrating things that we deal with on the Council is the cost of police overtime to staff these events. It's something several of my colleagues, including the President, have talked with the Mayor's Office about. And it's not just this mayor, it's previous administrations. We've got to figure out a way to deal with special events so that we're not breaking the backs of nonprofit promoters in the community. Councilwoman Clark, while she's not here, led the effort to reduce the charges that special event promoters pay. I don't think that applied to the Police Department. Right now, my understanding, if someone from BPD could chime in, the cost for an officer is $48 an hour, and the cost of a sergeant's 56.
Good afternoon, sir. It's Major Corbett from the Traffic Section, Special Event. The cost for police officers is $45 an hour, it's a flat rate. The cost for a sergeant is $52 an hour, that's a flat rate. And a cost for a lieutenant is $59, which is a flat rate.
So 45 sergeant, 52 lu... Pardon me. 45 officer, 52 sergeant, 57 lieutenant?
59. It's a $7 difference in each rate.
59 lieutenant. Got it. And are those officers being paid overtime when they're working a special event?
Yes, they are.
So would it be beneficial to the Police Department? And if you feel like you can't go too far... We already know the answer to the question, but if you don't feel like you can go too far, that's fine. We'll have the Commissioner answer it on behalf of the Police Department. But do you feel like it would be beneficial if you didn't have to send your officers to work special events, like say the Reindeer Run 5K? And instead, they could be in patrol where we need them?
Well, let me back up a little bit and explain.
Sure.
What we normally do when we have a lot of these special events, we incorporate the traffic enforcement officers from DOT. We also incorporate the school police, and we also incorporate the sheriffs. So there are times that we just don't have the resources to fill, so I do reach out to those other agencies and get the support. So some of those agencies are not... They cannot fill the vacancies, like a Baltimore Marathon that would require 644 officers. Some of those agencies just don't have the resources to do that. There are some agents... There are some events that will require the Baltimore Police Department, for an example, Light City. When you're down at the Inner Harbor, we share the responsibility both with the school police, along with the sheriffs. Monday through Thursday, we had 10 sheriffs working, because that's all they could provide for that, because of the duties that they are responsible for in the courthouse, and also covering the judges. And the school police, with them having school during the daytime, they could only provide 20. So we also supplement or use the school police at the Ravens football games, which requires 144 officers at each game that the Maryland Stadium Authority pay for. We supplement that with 20 school police.
Those aren't major... Please forgive me, allow me to interrupt. I'm not talking about exceptional events like Light City, or the Baltimore Marathon, or Artscape. And I'm not talking about a Ravens game that occurs 10 times out of the year, or Orioles games, which occur 81 times out of the year. I'm talking about things like the Reindeer Run. I'm talking about things like the Federal Hill Main Street Block Party, or they have them in Lauraville, they have them in Bel Air, they have them all over the city. Those are the types of events that I'm talking about where there's a requirement for X number of BPD officers there. Instead, we could be used in private security or other mechanisms to ensure that we have public safety there, without drafting officers, paying them overtime, and then de-incentivizing them from either working that overtime in patrol. I mean, I just... I don't understand.
Well, I understand what you said, Mr. Councilman, but the issue is, is that a lot of times, the sponsors are requested... They request Baltimore police officers.
I've been on the...
There are a lot of events, such as the event that is in Canton every St. Patrick's Day. The Sheriff Department runs that event.
I've been on the phone with you at least a dozen times in the last year.
Correct.
You tried to make... You tried to enforce police officers being there for a religious procession around the block for the Greek Enunciation Orthodox Cathedral in Mount Vernon for a procession that they've been running for 108 years. I don't think we need police officers paid at a clip of $45 an hour so that people can walk around the block to celebrate their religious beliefs. I just don't agree with it. Mr. Knight, can you please give us things from your perspective?
Well, quite honestly, the... We route the applications to the agencies that are affected, whether it's police, fire, our Traffic Division. We rely on them to tell us what the needs are. You know, we're not the experts in those fields. So we rely on them to tell us and the organizers what's required.
Mr. President?
You said it all, Mr. Chair. What I was going to say.
Colleagues, do we... Does anyone have any comments? Questions?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think that the traffic enforcement officers could be better utilized rather than police officers. That's my opinion.
Either Mr. Goodwin or Mr. Knight, what are we paying a traffic enforcement officer, plus or minus?
Sir, officers overtime is about $32.50. A sergeant is $35, and a lieutenant is $40.
And do you have ample staff of traffic enforcement officers that could be utilized for these events?
At the present time, with the capacity that we have on hand, we're managing pretty well. But if additional events come our way, we probably would need additional resources. Because as you know, it's volunteer overtime.
Right. You're not a mathematician by trade, Toby, but it sounds like it would be more cost-effective to put those resources into DOT with traffic enforcement officers than it would to be in BPD with standard pay or overtime pay. Is that correct?
In terms of funding, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions on this special event thing. The Major hinted at it earlier. Major, are we still at this impasse with trying to fix who pays for what as far as the stadium events? For example, we know that last year, we were hearing several times how it was pointed out that just 30 minutes away in Landover, in the football games, that Prince George's County... I mean, the Redskins would have to pay for all police officers that are outside of the stadium. But here, we pay for both from inside the city's budget. Have we started to deal with that issue yet?
Sir, the... As a correction, the Maryland Stadium Authority pay for every police officer that work on the inside of the stadium.
Right.
The traffic is not... They do not pay for the officers on the outside. That is done on a detailed basis.
Right. So have we... We still haven't figured out a way to duplicate what happens in Landover, where we are not incorporating that cost, and that that's actually coming from the football team?
What I was told, sir, was that is a contractual issue that Maryland Stadium Authority had entered into. If you recall, last year, we discussed that, and I think someone from the City Council was going to look into what was the contract about. Because some agreement was signed when the stadium was built, is that their Maryland Stadium Authority be responsible for all of the interior officers, and the BPD will be responsible, or the city of Baltimore will be responsible for anything on the outside.
Councilman, Director Porcel wants to add something, if that's okay?
That's quite all right.
Director?
From the previous question, I just wanted to say, as long as it's comparable services, we're more than willing to step up to the challenge. Since I've been here, there has been a couple instances where we were concerned about having adequate coverage for what we already were in line to do. And just now, there is some difference in the fee structure going forward. And because of that reduction, if there is more events, if we are required to perform at a greater capacity, it is going to strain our resources. So we ask, if there's a change, that you look at positions and budget authority in order that we can truly do the work that may be called upon us to do.
Thank you, Director. Councilman Scott?
Thank you.
Oh, excellent. Council President Young's going to follow up on that, then, Councilman Scott.
Yeah, we're not talking about every day. We're talking about special events. I mean, you know, you might have two or three a month. We're not talking like, you know, every day that there's going to be a festival. And I think your staff can handle it.
Councilman Scott?
Thank you, and thank you, Major, and Director Porcel, for your response. I think for my colleagues, we can add this to reason 1 billion and 5, that the state shouldn't control the Police Department, because they can mandate that we have to do ridiculous things like this, that they don't mandate on the other counties in Maryland. But also, Major, and I know that we're going to have a discussion about this at a later date, because we'll be bringing you guys back in, but wouldn't the reinvent of the auxiliary program help you towards dealing with this issue with the special events?
Sir, at this point, we'll be open to everything and anything, but I must say, and we've had auxiliaries before, auxiliaries are volunteers. And I give you... Give me... Give you an example. We had an event that we just wanted to happen in the community, so I asked the auxiliary units to do it. It was raining, so they all called out. We had no coverage at that event. Again, they're volunteers. So for these events, or some of these events, it's important that they should have some type of form... Some form of security at the event. So yes, the auxiliary unit would definitely help us, but it's not a guarantee that they will show up. And if I could piggyback on another response earlier, I do use the TOs. Let's say if there is a footrace, and it's a large number of corners, I give them first dibs, and what they do not fill, we will backfill with officers. And I started that after being here last year. So I'm quite sure that Mr. Marshal will be able to tell you that every other day, I'm calling him, letting him know, hey, I got another event. Can you give me 24? Can you give me 25? Also, what I did last year, different this year, is the Baltimore Police Department is not detailing any officers to do traffic control for baseball. The traffic enforcement officers, what's the conversation that was started? I requested them, and they've stepped up to do that. So we are using them. Only thing we are using at baseball from the Baltimore Police Department is our motor unit. And they are necessary to run interference with issues that may occur as you get off of 395, may occur as you get off of 295, something that the TOs do not have the expertise to deal with. So the three or four or five officers that's there from the motor unit that we're using, we're using them for that reason.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry. May I speak just real quick to your question? Mr. Chair, may I have it just... So in reference to the auxiliaries, under the Commissioner's tools, we are revamping the auxiliaries police, and that's exactly what they'll be doing. So there's a strong recruiting process going on right now, and that will be a lot of their lift to help events and everything else. So right now, we're just in the process of retraining them, revamping them, and getting more explorers in.
So we're going to... We're going to talk about that in detail, but I'm frankly disappointed by the tone with respect to the auxiliary officers. Auxiliary officers, and I happen to know two of the eight happen to be constituents and personal friends of mine, and I can tell you that they haven't been treated the way that they should have been treated over the past couple of years. And I brought this to the attention of Chief Gillis. I met with the Commissioner to discuss this. I'm very pleased to hear that that's the case, and I hope that is the case. And I will be circling up with them this evening to speak to both of them on the phone personally before this budget moves. I want to be explicitly clear about that. And I hope that those conversations have been happening, because it's something that Councilman Scott and I have been asking about for a very long time, in that there's been discussions about training, about getting their equipment back. We haven't been able to get a simple tax certification letter so that these individuals who have volunteered their time, and risked their own public safety, their own personal safety, to volunteer their time for the city, can get a state tax credit. That they can't get the state tax credit... They've been at... They're still missing their tax year 2016 letter. Have they gotten that letter yet?
So to your point, last Thursday, we actually met with them, so I'm glad you're going to follow up. You'll find that we had a very robust, almost two-hour discussion, and one of those issues came up was their tax credit. So we're looking... We're going back now to recapture the law so they can have those tax letters. So I absolutely agree with you. It is being addressed, and I welcome you to please circle around. They'll tell you we probably had a really good discussion moving forward.
I appreciate that. We have... We're in an all-hands-on-deck situation in this city. When we have people who are ready to put up and volunteer and help us out with what is unequivocally the largest problem that we have in the city right now, which is violence, we need to be taking advantage of that, and we need to be treating those people with respect and like their partners. And I think everyone on the Council here takes that very, very seriously. Councilman Schleifer?
Just a quick question. Bob, last year, in last year's budget, I recall a line item of $1 million, in which the city was going to be requesting, the administration was requesting for the external resources that were being provided, whether it's the traffic people or the police officers that are outside the stadium. Has that ever occurred this year?
So you are correct. There was, in the fiscal '18 budget, there was an increase, a projected increase in revenue if we could go get that additional money. That has not... That has not happened. So as had been mentioned, it's a contractual agreement, so it has to be negotiated. It has not been renegotiated yet. But we can follow up and see what the status is, if that is still being pursued.
So that wasn't negotiated before we decided that we'd add that to the budget? We didn't realize that we couldn't actually do that?
No. I mean, the plan was to go do that, and I'll have to check to see if we're still pursuing that. But at the time, we weren't sure what we would get from that agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, can you get that to us in writing, please?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to go back to the stadiums. Okay? Inside the stadiums are Baltimore City Police Officers. Am I correct? Yes, sir. Okay. I think it would be very wise for the state to use those MTA police on the outside, because that stadium belongs to the state, not to the city. So inside, our officer could be inside, while officer could be outside, and they have the state for inside. I mean, we shouldn't be paying for the outside of the stadium, a poor city like Baltimore that's struggling for finances to have youth opportunities, programs, and for college bound to be in our schools. I mean, that's a lot of money that we are spending on securing the outside of a stadium. So have y'all had any discussions... Anybody have any discussions with the Stadium Authority about having the state troopers or the MTA police, or whatever other police they have, to do the outside of the stadiums? Sir, I must say that the state police are also on the inside. They use all of the special resources that they have on the inside. I've never seen them, no disrespect. I've been to just about every football game. I've never seen a state trooper. Only time I see a state trooper, when the governor or the lieutenant-governor is in the box. I've never seen them. Two years ago, they started using the state police and placing them at all of the gates, because we just didn't have the resources. So as I said, it's 144 officers that's required to work inside. If we, BPD, would supply them 80 officers, we're lucky. They are supplemented by school police, and also supplemented by the state police. So they are... If you come through, they're also... They are the ones that block off the bridges, the Austin Street Bridge, along with the Hanover Street Bridge with the state police cars. So there are some on the outside as well, Mr. President. Well, they should be covering all of the outside, not our officers. So we're talking about inside, who pays for that? Maryland Stadium Authority. Okay. And outside, who pays for that? They're detailed. Who's detailed? The Baltimore City Police Officer Detail. So we pay for that out of the police budget? How much is that? It's roughly 79 officers at eight hours. Okay. Well, finance get us those numbers. We want to know exactly how much it costs, because I think it's totally ridiculous that the state does not police their own stadiums. We don't own them, they own them.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Scott.
Can I add to that? Just to add to the President's point, and this is really something that I think is in support of BPD, because we know that... We know where these officers come from. They come from District Patrol, which is severely understaffed as is. So we have to get a resolution to this issue.
I'm going to go to Councilwoman Snead, then, Bob, I got a question for you.
Just really quick. You said the officers at 295 and 395, they have extra experience. I'm just wondering if those DOT employees can get that experience or no?
I'm sorry, repeat your question again, ma'am?
Is it possible that the traffic enforcement folks who work for the city, if they can be trained in those specialized areas for 295 and 395, because you said they don't have that experience?
They're not allowed to investigate accidents, nor they're allowed to block off 295 or 395. Their responsibility is just to do traffic control on the streets of the city of Baltimore. 295 and 395 is part of Baltimore City, so in case there is an accident or any event, that's we, the Police Department, is responsible for that. We can ask for help from the state if it impacts the further part out of the city or the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Then we need to give up 83 and give it to the state. We don't need to be policing that and issuing traffic citations. I know it belongs to the city, but any other municipality, the state take care of that. So I don't know who need to work on that, any administration, as we go back to Annapolis, to give 83, I-83, to the state police. Let them monitor all of the highways. But that's considered a highway.
Bob, what's a line item in the budget for special events for the Police Department, like special... There's a line item in there, right?
There's a service, which you'll see in the presentation, which includes all the traffic work and special events combined.
What service is that?
634.
634. 634.
One second.
Mr. Chair?
What page?
It's also in the Highway User Revenue Table on page 143 of the executive summary.
All right.
Where it shows that it's Highway User Revenue money going to fund it.
Bob, walk me through... Walk me through where this is on 319, please.
I'm sorry.
Please walk me through where this is on page 319.
Three... It's on page 350.
634?
634.
Crowd Traffic and Special Events Management?
That's right. Right.
Is that all staff?
It's mostly... It's mostly staff. It's basically the officers that are assigned to these. It's the estimated cost of the officers assigned to these functions.
$10 million.
Right.
I'm going to say that. Colleagues, I'm going to make a statement here, and I don't expect us to get this resolved in the next week, but I'm going to dig a line in the sand right now. If we don't get this resolved this year, I will cut this entire line item from the budget next year. Do I have the support of my colleagues?
Absolutely.
Councilman Scott? Councilman Dorsey?
Considering it's in the Highway User Revenue Table, and I think that the very few funds that we have coming from the state to fund transportation are, at least in part, allocated to this, and will be better spent on transportation, yes.
Councilman Cohen? Councilman Schleifer? Yes? Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Stokes? Councilwoman Snead? Councilman Henry? Councilman Scott? You... Sounds like a yes. We want to get this problem resolved. So what's the... What's the next steps? I think we've beat this... Beat this issue for now, and we can get ready to move on to the Police Department. But what are... Mayor's Office, what are the next steps? And Bob, Major Corbett, Director Porcel, what are our next steps to start to work on this issue as soon as this budget is passed, so that we can avoid cutting this entire $10.2 million line item from next year's budget?
I think the follow-up from earlier, which is to check back and see what the status is, because there was, at some point, an intent to try to go and negotiate a better deal and get coverage for some of the work outside of the stadium. We'll have to find out where that is.
And that's the stadium. What about... What are we going to do about the policy issues with respect to what... Major, you alluded to this before, what BPD requires in terms of number of officers per event, whether or not these promoters can go with private security, whether or not we can use folks from DOT's team, whether or not we can use folks from Sheriff's team? Because we've got to stop making people pay $45 an hour and taking our officers away from patrol. It's unacceptable. So what are we going to do on the policy side? What's the next step?
I think what we should do is all come together. One person from DOT, a person from finance, a person from the Police Department, let's they reevaluate exactly what is going on with this. But keep in mind, with Baltimore Police Department, our responsibility is to render all these events safe. And I can sit here and say that, out of all the years I've been doing special event, we have not had one major event that causes us to be concerned about the safety of the events.
I appreciate that, and I respect that, but at the same time, while we're keeping these events to that standard of safe, we're also taking officers out of patrol, which these events to that standard of safe, we're also taking officers out of patrol, which is unacceptable. And we're going to spend a great deal of time talking about that tonight. So we need to figure this out, and we need to be serious about getting this figured out, Major.
Copy, sir.
All right, so what I'd like to propose here, we talked about DOT, we talked about finance, we talked about the police department. Mr. President, I'd like to see someone from the council involved in those discussions.
You could have a member of your budget committee or public safety.
Is there, is there any concern with working with a member of the council who the council president would task to join you all to work on that?
I'd volunteer.
Excellent. We will, the council president will, the council president will appoint someone to be responsible for liaising with you guys to start working through that problem, starting as soon as we get this budget passed. Everyone's good and on the same page?
Yes.
Any concerns?
Yes.
All right, DOT, thank you guys very much. Appreciate your time here. Now we're going to move into the larger part of the hearing tonight. We're going to start with the commissioner. I know you have a presentation. I'm going to, Mr. Commissioner, I'm going to ask that you start off by introducing everyone from your command staff. Folks in command staff, if you could kindly just pop up, raise your hand so the council members can see who you are. We know most of you folks, but there's some folks that are new faces or we haven't met before. Once you get through with that, Commissioner, if you could please kick off your presentation. I would ask that you keep the presentation in the 15 to 20 minute range. I know you do have a lot of material in there. I will say that most of our colleagues have an idea of what types of questions they want to ask, but you know, it would be good for you to provide some adequate context before we start that conversation. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Commissioner.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members. To my immediate right have Deputy Commissioner Andre Bonaparte, Colonel Byron Conaway, Colonel Robert Smith, Colonel Darren Garrity, Chief Dave Callaway, Callie, I'm sorry, and Chief Steve Odell. To the far right, Colonel Perry Stansfield. To his left, Colonel Melvin Russell, IG Ed Jackson, Major Roden, Major Lansky, Fiscal Director Paula Williams, Chief of Staff Jim Gillis, Major Partee, Major Howe on the Back, Michelle, where's Burke? I apologize for that. Colonel Bellaro, Major Ants, Major Gobart, Lieutenant Smith, Lieutenant Efflin, Lieutenant Abid, Sergeant Les, Major Snead, Colonel Corbett, and Colonel Worley.
Colonel, I apologize, I didn't know, I apologize for calling you a lower rank, sir.
My apologies.
I take that apology back.
He might, he might try to act for, ask for acting pay or something, so I don't want to give him that. Then you'd really be upset at me. Okay, first of all, good evening, everybody, and thank you for having us here to present our budget presentation for 2019. The subject matter experts that are with me are, have very detailed knowledge of the respective program areas that we're going to be going into. So with that, I'd like to move to the first program area.
All right, this is Chief Stephen O'Dell, and I'm presenting very quickly on Administration Service 621. It has a total fiscal 19 recommended budget of $60,262,599. This service actually comprises a number of activities to include the Police Commissioner's Office, fiscal, grants management, IT, media relations, legal affairs, body one camera unit, and DOJ compliance, to name some of the bulk services that are activities within that service. The, I think some of the highlights or the main highlight would be the implementation of biometric time clocks is coming in this fiscal year to include overtime forecasting and overtime accountability software and measures. The, you're going to see a reduction from the subscription and maintenance of long, or the vehicle reduction, and then you're going to see subscription and maintenance for long-term needs of body one cameras and full implementation of its use, which we have done and is rolled out. The budget also restores $5 million of unspecified reductions from the FY18 budget, and that's administration.
Thank you for having us. I'm going to talk about Service Number 622, which is the Patrol Division. As you well know, the Patrol Division is a full-service police support unit. In that unit, we have nine districts, which have the following inside each district. There's a uniform patrol unit, there's an admin section, there's also an operations section inside the Patrol Division. Last year, there was 100, 1.3 million calls that were called into the 911 center. 850,000 of those calls were responded to by the Baltimore City Police Department, which is the highest out of any Maryland jurisdiction. In regards to the daily activities that the Patrol units do, we also provide community or and policing, and we support the public.
My name is Colonel Byron Conaway. I'm here to talk about Criminal Investigation Service Number 623. Primarily, the budget is, remained unchanged for FY18. The BPD is in the process of decentralization of citywide robbery unit as well as the citywide shootings unit, and we're here to reestablish the district detective unit. Each of the nine police districts will minimally have one commanding officer, two sergeants, and 10 investigators. The BPD will maintain a citywide robbery unit who will investigate pattern robberies along with commercial robberies and bank robberies. There also will be a task force component there that partners up with our federal partners. Next.
Service Number 624. 12 positions are salary saved from the service. The budget reflects positions transferred to align the budget with the department's past reorganization. We have improved collaboration and communication with our federal and local law enforcement. We have revitalized the intelligence sharing section with the Watt Center, with, where the district officers along with various intelligent components from around the agency. We have transferred the district intel officers to CID, which is myself, to centralize intelligence sharing. We continue to focus on criminal associates of victims as well as rapidly deploying to clearly identify target zones. The BPD continues to dismantle criminal organizations throughout a variety of means. We have drastically increased the use of data to determine where to best deploy limited resources. Our trigger pullers list has been changed to the at-risk individual list. Our mission is to efficiently and effectively arrest all violent and nonviolent offenders wanted a warrant and located within the Baltimore metropolitan area. We provide undercover support in our anti-crime sections, but this action is not limited to by walks and surveillance operations.
Good afternoon, City Council President, Chair, men and women of City Council. I'm Colonel Smith, Robert L. Smith, Chief of SOD, Special Operations, SWAT ESU. The Special Weapons and Tactics Team is a task to resolve armed barricaded individuals, hostage rescue incidents, and mitigate suicidal persons in addition to serving high-risk search and seizure warrants for violent offenders. SWAT managed over 200 of these high-risk incidents last year with 135 search and seizure warrants, 19 barricaded individuals, and hostage rescue incidents. With an increase in extremist activities, SWAT has provided security for over 35 events requiring extraordinary tactical consideration last year with an increase presently being reported for this year. SWAT also conducts enhanced training for patrol officers in other police jurisdictions within the city to increase preparedness in events of active shooter incidents. This unit provides additional resources to the Patrol Division and our mission to reduce crime with enhanced uniform police presence. Currently SWAT is deployed in the Pennsylvania Avenue current corridor. SWAT is often requested for demonstrations at school, community event, providing positive and engaging community contacts.
Good evening, Lieutenant Colonel Rich Worley. I have the Service Number 626, Operational and Analytical Intelligence, which includes the ComStatit Unit, the Criminal Intel Unit, City Watch, and Watch Center. Basically, we're support services for patrol and operations so that we can get out the intel accurately and timely so that we can deploy and conduct enforcement in areas where we're beginning hit with violence. It also includes portion of the budget for the SDSCs, which are operating in the eastern and western districts. I also have the Emergency Communication Section. It includes 850,000 calls for service, which we have several things coming in place to try to reduce that on the call volume for the officers. It also includes ShotSpotter, which went online yesterday, was very successful, went on at 5:00. 6:15, we got our first test, and for the first five tests, we've done an outstanding job. They dispatch it to, at least two of them, the officer had the app on his phone and knew where the discharging was before it was even dispatched. So that's working great for us so far. Thank you.
My name is David Callie, Chief of the Office of Professional Responsibility, also known as Internal Affairs. Currently, the breakup of Operation, excuse me, OPR is three sections. The Anti-Corruption and Ethical Investigation Section, the Internal Affairs Section, and the Equal Opportunity and Diversity Section. Under Commissioner Tuggles' vision for integrity enhancement within the department, we have just recently created a new section that will fall under OPR called the Integrity Assurance Unit. And that will be essentially a polygraph unit that will be polygraphing members of the department that are in Internal Affairs and other specialty units. To date, we've given polygraph examinations to everybody within Internal Affairs and anybody who's interested in coming into Internal Affairs in the future. With those sections in mind, we essentially look at misconduct. And misconduct can be allegations of discourtesy, excessive force, criminal activity, violations of department policy. Once we get an intake of an allegation, we determine where that allegation best sits and goes to one of those three units. This line item is under Public Safety and Service Number 628. To accomplish this mission within OPR, I currently have one lieutenant colonel, a major, five lieutenants, 11 sergeants, and 29 detectives. In addition to that, I have six contract or administrative personnel that handle the processing of some of the paperwork that we have. Thank you.
Good evening, Major Snead, Commander of Records and Research. I'll be addressing Records Management Section, Service Number 632. Under the Records and Research Section, Records Management is broken down into two parts. The Record Management Unit, which is responsible for data entry of every police report, follow-up, citizen contact receipt, and criminal citations into the BPD Records Management System. Also, Central Records. So Central Records' main functions are to collect reviews, store, and upon request, distribute police reports. They also house all Baltimore City warrants and maintain the hot desk on a 24-hour basis. Underneath the Central Records Section, the units that accomplish these functions are the Staff Review Unit, which collects and reviews police reports for accuracy, the Quality Compliance Unit, which coordinates the submission of delinquent reports and those returned for corrections. The Archiving Unit scans police reports into the Records Management System. The Expungement Unit receives requests to expunge records from the system from civilians as well as in the form of court orders. The Community Correspondence Unit processes requests from citizens and attorneys for copies of police reports. The Warrant Unit houses all police reports and protective orders. The Validations Unit validates NCIC entries made by the hot desk. And the hot desk enters and removes pertinent meters and NCIC information for the department. This would include warrants, missing persons, stolen vehicles, tags, and articles. The unit is staffed 24 hours, 365 days a year, and receives phone calls from only BPD members, and we receive incoming and outgoing teletypes from other law enforcement agencies. Thank you.
Crowd and Traffic and Special Events. This service is responsible investigating crashes that result in life-threatening injuries or death, provide traffic, crowd control during events, and manage coordination of special events within the city. Traffic crash investigation evaluates trends from preventable department crashes across the city. They communicate with commanders to discuss training and trends in particular districts. The service prepares deployment strategies that allow the department to staff events while maintaining an appropriate presence in other areas of the city. The budget includes funding for the replacement of helmets, boots, and safety equipments for the motor unit. Baltimore's economy is positively impacted by hundreds of special events each year. Baltimore has several dozen high-profile events, which require the deployment of officers. Special Event manages police department's coverage for several major cultural events in the city. Light City, To Be One, Preakness, Artscape, Baltimore Marathon, as well as the Ravens and Orioles games.
Service Number 635, Recruitment and Training. This service provides the recruitment unit the necessary funding to launch a comprehensive recruitment campaign targeting applicants, specifically city residents, for the positions of police officer and cadets. Working with the mayor's innovative team, we have several inventive projects we are developing and implementing. The Recruitment Unit attends various job fairs, meet and greets at area high schools and colleges primarily in the city. They have also attended job fairs targeting retiring military personnel. Additionally, this service covers the background investigation given to every applicant for the position of police officer and cadet. Currently, there are 147 police applicants and four cadet applicants in the background investigation progress, process. Thank you.
Under the training aspect of Recruitment and Training, Service Number 635, what we're looking at is an increase in naloxone, the funding for naloxone. This increase represents proactive measures to not just keep pace, but to be ahead of the curve that is the opioid crisis. To date, we've had 87 naloxone deployments, and that's versus 108 all of 2017. So we're on pace for 200 deployments for our naloxone, and it also provides replacements so that those offices that do deploy are able to be refitted without delay. This also counts in for replacement for those doses that are due to expire because naloxone only has a two-year shelf life. We've had 1,027 kits issued and 1,311 individuals that are trained but have not been issued due to their status as either on medical or not street personnel.
Special Operations Canine and Mounted. Service Number 637. The Canine Unit presently has 16 dogs. These Canines have specific specialties from detecting narcotics, finding guns, locating explosive materials, and apprehension techniques. We anticipate the purchase of nine dogs to replace aging Canines presently reaching their retirement. This unit provides additional support to patrol and narcotic detectives with narcotic and firearm detections, building searches, and perimeter support. With the increase in extremist activities our Canines provide, an added level of security sweeps and detection to high-profile media events and VIP visits working in conjunction with our bomb technicians. The Canine Unit assists SWAT with their arduous missions also. In addition, Canine Units provide uniform crime suppression in areas throughout the city, regularly assisting patrol efforts throughout the city. These dogs are excellent ambassadors for the city and police department as they are regularly requested for demonstration at schools and community. Our Mounted Unit is the nation's longest continuous-serving mounted unit since 1888. This unit has been one of the long-outlasting units that's still in existence. Six horses, one in training. The Mounted Unit continues to be an extraordinary resources for crowd control, and we use them every weekend downtown. Mounted Unit conducts joint training with other jurisdictions. Mounted Unit conducts joint training with other jurisdictions to provide crowd control and civil disturbance functions. Mounted Unit promotes positive relationships with city residents, and this service supports a number of community events and often visits city schools for show and tell. Service Number 638. The Marine Unit is responsible for year-round security over sixty miles of waterway that borders the city. This includes the Inner Harbor, Cruz Lines, the Under Armour Complex, Covington Development, Horseshoe Casino, along with the Port of Baltimore, which is the largest, I mean, which is the ninth-largest port. The unit provides security, secure waterways by enforcing boating laws, applying safety rules, and assisting boaters with the Middle Branch River, within the Middle Branch River. They play a significant role in providing security during high-profile events: Fleet Week, New Year's Eve, Fourth of July, Light City, Marathon, concerts on the water. The unit also provides critical infrastructure checks with commercial businesses and assets lining these waters, waterways. Within the Marine Unit is the dive team. They are often called upon to rescue individuals who have fallen into the harbor. If these incidents turn into a recovery, the dive team is utilized. The dive team is often called upon to locate evidence from a crime discarded in the waterways Aviation. Service Number 640. The Aviation Unit, better known as Foxtrot, provides patrol and area responses to calls for service. The unit operates thirty-five-hundred to four-thousand flight hours a year. The aircrafts are equipped with FLIR, day cameras with digital recording capabilities, video downlinking capabilities, LoJack, moving maps, displays, multiple police and aviation radios, a PA system, as well as a sixty-million candle-powered night sun searchlight. These systems are instrumental in allowing the crew to safely, efficiently, effectively keep the citizens of Baltimore safe while providing support for the officers on the ground. Foxtrot responds to thousands of calls for service each year, providing officers with backup from the sky by finding, tracking suspects, searching for, following stolen vehicles, missing persons, searches, and more. Helicopters have a great tactical advantage. They increase officer's safety and the unmatched ability to travel across Baltimore City within minutes. Foxtrot is available to units on the ground to assist with the suspect searches and premise checks. The perspective, the perspective from the air is far superior to the views from the ground level, and the tactical flight officers can provide valuable information to officers that are in pursuit of a suspect on foot or by vehicle. The Aviation Unit provides assistance in sniper, hostage and barricade situation, and is an integral part of the city's plan to maintain homeland security. Foxtrot has the capability to downlink live video to report and assist city and police leaders during public events. The video capability is a valuable tool, not only to record events as evidence, but provide another layer of transparency to the public. The Aviation Unit supports the federal government with homeland security and assists outside jurisdictions when requested. Foxtrot is an important asset for the Baltimore Police Crime Reduction Strategies for the overall safety of the city of Baltimore. Foxtrot also provides community engagement roles, providing displays of the aircraft to public and engaging in young people as a positive role model. Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, is Service 642, The Crime Laboratory. Baltimore City and Baltimore City Police Department is lucky to be home to one of the most excellent and well-regarded crime labs in the country, one of the oldest crime labs in the country, and one of the most efficient and effective crime labs in the country. Budget increases here reflects thirteen forensic scientists to aid in crime gun initiatives, as well as a small increase for consumables and equipment. A accomplishment note was we went through our re-accreditation this year, two months ago, and we had eleven external auditors, including an international presence, and we did incredibly well. We obtained re-accreditation without any problems as one of the busiest crime labs in the country with one of the largest scopes of accreditation, ISO accreditation.
We're going to go to our efforts with respect to overtime and our efforts to reduce the level of overtime that we've been using.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Give me one second. We've got about ten slides left.
Uh huh, yes.
Can we, we do our best to try and get through this in, you know, five, six, seven-minute range?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
So, overtime is a, is a, is a problem that we have been dealing with actively and proactively. That has included since my involvement in this in January to now, with the prior PC and the current PC of implementing new authorization forms for overtime, preauthorization forms, the bi-weekly tracking that includes more frequent meetings and evaluations of accountability amongst the different operating units and how they are using their overtime. These things have led, along with the Overtime Abuse Unit that Lieutenant Eflin behind me is going to speak of briefly, have led to reductions of at least fourteen percent in the last seven pay periods, and that's in comparison to the prior seven pay periods before these changes took effect. So, there was a time in December and a few other times during the year that the projected overtime balance was going to be fifty-two million. What we're looking at now is about forty-eight, and I believe with the last three pay periods, we're going to get into around forty-seven million. I think what's different this time to talk about, and what will be discussed with the different types of questions that might be asked, is that we've, we've come to a point where we've got a sustainable solution. We're seeing a, a dollar figure that is representative of the unfortunate staffing shortage that we have, where we've been able to, to start to clear off the abuse side of it. And we're seeing that reduction come in, and we're seeing a fairly consistent average. So, in comparison for this year, there was a rolling overtime average of one-point-eight million, approximately one-point-nine. We're running down now into the one-sevens. So, and we can talk a lot more about that based on the questions that do get asked. But what you'll see in the pie chart on the next slide is the breakdown of what that overtime is comprised of. You'll see that the largest portion of twenty-seven percent is staffing shortage. There's a daily component, which is your daily overtime, and investigation component at seventeen percent. And your out-of-district really ends up becoming part of your staffing shortages, but with the different overtime codes, it just depends how the selecting officer decides to pick their overtime code. So, some of those things actually overlap or were selected with different priorities.
Good evening. The Overtime Abuse Unit is responsible for reviewing the department's overtime financial data to pinpoint the different bureaus, units, or individuals which have overtime earnings that are above average. The overtime average is comprised of the total overtime earnings, meaning it is inclusive of court overtime, daily overtime, and secondary employment. The earnings are then analyzed for any discrepancies.
Good evening. Major Hans from Recruitment Section. So, what we have here is our recruitment. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. I put this up to my height. All right. So, for the Baltimore City Police Department, so far this year, we've taken in five-hundred-and-twenty-five applications for the Civil Service Test, and what we have broken down is by race and by, and by gender for pass, pass, fail. As you can see, we've had a hundred and fifty-three African-American males take the test. Thirty-two have failed out of that one-hundred and, sorry, out of the one-hundred and fifty-three. The chart pretty much speaks for itself. I don't think you really need me to run through the numbers, but our hiring, our application numbers are very similar to last year, and what we want to do is push forward to actually really triple this, this number, because we want to get to three-hundred, three-hundred applications a year to get us to where we need to be at. If you can go to the next slide? Go back one. So, currently, this breaks down the disqualifiers for two-thousand, for two thousand and eighteen so far. There's been a hundred and fifty-one people so far disqualified, and it breaks down the reasons, as far as a driving record, status, criminal record, DWIs, drug usage integrity, sold drugs, or recency. And when we look at recency, the key word for recency was marijuana because it had to be out of that thirty-six-month period. So, if you smoked marijuana within thirty-six months, you cannot be a police officer. That's a state regulation by COMAR. Also, in recency, when you look at COMAR, there are some other disqualifying drugs that you can actually use one time and still be a police officer, like cocaine. However, the police department can restrict that and make that, make that more intense. Our biggest problem that we have for our agency when people apply is that recency is the biggest issue to keep off, to keep folks from being police. So, that's one of the biggest problems we have with police officers and cadets. The next slide. So, currently, the cadet program started back in August of last year. Right now, we have ten cadets hired. Two are from Baltimore City. Oh, sorry, these are all the Baltimore City, these, these are broken down as far as where they live at. So, two for Baltimore City that are African-American, one Asian male from Baltimore City. You have four black males from the state of Maryland, one Asian male from the state of Maryland, and a black male from out of state, and one Hispanic. So, the biggest ticker here is that you see no women. So, we're pushing very, very hard to get women cadets. We've actually worked on a, a, a small video to help let women see where they're, where they're a part of this agency. So, we've used women, women officers that have went through the ranks that were cadets in different ranks and showing where they work, and so that's one of the things that we have on our webpage, and we also have on YouTube. Next page. And this is the Baltimore City applicants. So, for two thousand and eighteen, as of May ninth, of May twenty-ninth, we've had a hundred and four Baltimore City applicants, a hundred and, a hundred and four Baltimore City residents apply for Baltimore City Police Department. As you can see, it's broken down by race and gender. African-American males are the highest at fifty-nine. African-American females are at twenty-eight. White males are at twelve, and white females are at one. Hispanics males are at two, Hispanic females at one, Asian males at one, and Asian females at zero. And again, you see that trend with women. So, we're really pushing hard to get a plan together for bringing women into our police And these are the strategies that we're working on, some are in place, and some are being built. We talk about what we have in the pipeline. There's a term that's currently used for what we have coming into the police department. So, when we say pipeline, we have a hundred and forty-two applicants in the pipeline or in background. That means they're in the process of application to the point of being hired, but during that time, you can get eliminated for many different reasons. The agility test has been an issue for the Baltimore City Police Department. So, we, we require that a applicant run a mile within sixteen and a half minutes. They do so many push-ups, they do so many sit-ups. So, what we've done, we've made a marginal score that if you fail one of those criterias, we will still let you go through the process. However, if you're a marginal scorer and you miss the run by thirty seconds, I'm pretty sure if you get hired, you go into police academy, and you get trained, your PT, you'll make up the thirty seconds. So, we bring those individuals in and give them the opportunity to, to get hired. Since we've done the marginal score, we've done it in the month of May, the first testing date was the first week of May, there were six candidates that would have been eliminated if we had not changed to the marginal score. So, we added additional six applicants to the hiring process. We did the same thing for our next testing, next testing, and we included additional five people because of the marginal score. So, if you look at the marginal score, we had eleven people that would not have been part of the hiring process, which we're now in. If you break that down for the next six months, that's sixty-six more people a year that can be a Baltimore City Police. If you break that down for a year, it's a hundred and twenty-two. So, that's definitely an improvement. The next thing is that we're working on a boot camp. So, some people just fail the PT test, but they're good candidates. So, we're doing a trial, a trial program with the Innovation Team, ENT, where we're having a boot camp where there's a very experienced Ravens trainer who's giving his time to do a boot camp for individuals that cannot pass the agility. And our first crack at that will start June twenty-fifth, and we're focusing that to city residents, because we really want city residents to be police. So, this will be focused at all the city residents that have failed the PT test and that go through this month course to be able to exercise for three months and get them through this course. One of the other things, so, just applying for the police department is kind of antiquated. We have NeoGov where the application is actually going to go online. Currently, to be a police officer, the only way you can apply is to physically come to this building. So, I live in West Baltimore, and I don't have a car or a bus pass, and I can't make it. I can go to a library or use my smartphone, and I can apply to be a police officer. The next thing is the Civil Service Test. Our Civil Service Test is currently, a paper test is about twenty years old. You physically have to come in the building of the police department and take that test, and then we use our recruiters, who we want to be out in the street, actually giving that test. So, we don't really want it to happen. So, National Testing Network is the electronic test. It's about forty-six questions. It's given by a proctor at two locations. There's one location in Catonsville, and there's one location in West Baltimore, but there's about a hundred sites on the East Coast, and they proctor and take care of the test for you. Our current test only looks at two categories, and let me just refer to my notes really quickly so I won't get that wrong. Our test currently looks at memorization and reading and comprehension. The National Testing Network Online Civil Service Test looks at reading and writing, observation, assessment, critical thinking, interrogation, investigation, communication abilities, team orientation, confrontation enforcement initiatives, restraint in using use of force, ethical, ethical orientation, the ability to understand and help humans, help, help humanity organizational, let me cut off right there?
Yeah.
Okay. I've got a lot to talk about, so we're going to give it to you. All right.
Commissioner, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up in a minute or less.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman. First of all, you had the opportunity to see the budget highlights. You know what they are. All of this is encompassed in our strategy going forward with respect to the crime fight in Baltimore. That involves a lot of things. It's not one-dimensional, it's not just locking people up, it's engaging the community, it's, it's treatment for our opioid addicted, it's, it's a number of things. You know, we are one component of a much bigger problem, but we're succeeding, and when I say that, if you look at the stats, the data speaks for itself. Crime is down, it's down significantly. If you look at May of two thousand and seventeen, murders were at thirty, thirty for that, that particular month. For May of two thousand and eighteen, they're at twenty, fifty-two percent reduction. So, as we, as we present this information, I can assure you that where we're going in terms of the strategy is the right way to go as we, as we see results, we see value-added for what we're spending. So, thank you for hearing our presentation.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Schleifer?
How many questions we got? One, two?
Councilman, Councilman Schleifer is going to get two questions because he has to leave to observe the religious holiday.
So, I'll start first with, with the consent decree. I mean, obviously, with the shift in leadership a couple times, where are we with the consent decree? And are we still on track and meeting the paces? Has there been any interruption? Or what could you tell us about where we, where we are with it? And if we're meeting everything we're supposed to be meeting on it?
Right. We, we are still on track with the consent decree. We're doing what I call ring the bell. We're ringing the bell with, with respect to the consent decree every single week. We had our most recent hearing in front of Judge Bedar last week, and it was, I thought it was very productive. We've got Michelle here. Michelle, if you can give us a really quick data dump on that? Thank you.
All right. And those of you who know me know how trying that is, but I will try to be brief. Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, council members. Thank you for the question, sir. So, we are really very lucky here-
All right, and those of you who know me know how trying that is, but I will try to be brief. Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Chair, council members. Thank you for the question, sir. Um, so, we are really very lucky here, um, because in many consent decree cities, their consent decree, um, that they're given this big old document, it's hard to understand, it's lots of legal leaves, and they're said, "Here, figure it out, figure out how to implement it." Ours actually requires our monitoring team to provide us with annual plans so that we're clear, the public is clear, and the judge is clear, what we are required to do that particular year. This is our bible. This is our first-year plan. Judge Bedar adopted it on February sixteenth, so we are about three and a half months into this first year. It is fifty-three pages of three hundred and nine distinct requirements. Um, there is not a lot of wiggle room at all, um, and, um, and I can, uh, I'm very happy to report thus far, uh, we've had about seventy deliverables. We have complied with every single one. We've met with Judge Bedar four times on the issues of use of force, misconduct, technology, and transportation, thank you, transport of persons in custody. We've also had a, um, one quarterly public session with him, uh, but we are definitely right on track. So, so with that being said, again, the consent decree is the gold standard by, by
which, uh, we're being measured right now. And I do have to acknowledge the vision of the mayor and Mr. President, uh, for, uh, recognizing the need for the consent decree.
Well, I was engaged in conversation.
Can you, can you repeat that, sir?
Sure, I, Mr. President, I just was saying that, uh, the consent decree is the gold standard by which we're operating. And I wanted to acknowledge, uh, sort of the, the fore vision of the mayor and yourself, uh, for recognizing the need for, for the consent decree.
Thank you. I had to force the mayor to do it. The former mayor.
Oh, okay.
I have a question. Is this on, this mic is on? Okay, um, the budget calls for seven-point-four million dollars in, uh, budget increase to fund one hundred new police positions. How many of these positions do you expect to fill this upcoming year? And if these positions are filled, what will the money be used for? And what percentage of this money do you expect will be spent on overtime?
So the, if you referred to the, the pie chart that you received, uh, if we can go back to that.
She can put it back up there.
All right. We're going to talk about the number of people that we're capable of getting through or into the pipeline, uh, within the two thousand, uh, two thousand and nineteen budget cycle. And you probably want to chime in on that as well.
So, um, for the pipeline, again, I was saying earlier, a pipeline-
Before you talk about the pipeline, um, and I don't want to talk about the hundred new officers that they put in the budget. How many of vacancies do you have now before the one hundred officers? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, okay, all right. It's ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two, that's correct.
So, the one hundred, um, extra officers that was put into the budget, um, can you fill them within a year or two?
We think, we believe we can.
Okay, now, if you can't, what happens to that money? Is it going to be used for overtime?
It probably will be used for overtime, uh, because we, the, the need, uh, doesn't diminish whether we have the body as a, as a FTE or have to have a, a sworn body in that position working overtime. The need is still there for, for that, uh-
Um, yeah, but I thought that, um, the police department were looking at ways to reduce overtime, and if that's the case, we just gave a hundred, uh, funded positions to the police department. And I think one, here when we was in, they said that they didn't even ask for the one hundred position. Am I correct?
That would be correct, Mr. Chair. Mrs., Mr. President, Mr. Chair, if I might add-
Please.
Uh, thank you. So, Mr. Commissioner, this isn't for you, this is for finance, because, uh, someone's lying here. So finance has said to this council multiple times this week that they know you won't hire for these positions, and that'll be used for overtime. So which one is it? If we have ninety-two vacancies that we currently have today, and we're adding a hundred, and they also told this council i- in late December that you also have two-hundred-and-twenty-five salary sage positions, then someone's playing the shell game here. So will we hire the ni- we ha- we have to be living in a realm of reality here, folks. We had our first positive year for attrition for a long time, and that was plus-four, right? So you don't jump to plus-four to ninety-two in one year. That's just not going to happen. So what actually is going to happen with these positions? Because what we've been told by finance multiple times is that they're going to be boosting the budget so that it'll go for overtime. They've said that to this committee and others multiple times this week.
So, to address that question, um, you know, we, we don't know exactly where we'll be on recruiting. It changes month by month. Uh, the intent is to ultimately fill those positions. Will they be able to fill all of the current vacancies plus these? I would, I would, I would love it if they could, but we can't say that. Um, we-
I'm glad we have YouTube around here so that we can pull back in, pull back from early this week to see exactly what was said to this council. Because now, what we're hearing is backtracking on the previous statement. It's a yes or no question. Do we expect them to hire ninety-two officers plus a extra hundred this fiscal year?
I can answer for them.
We know the answer is no, but we want to hear it.
Even if we look at the budget book, it says that, that it's not going to happen. I mean, we're, we're losing, we're losing forty-five, fifty percent of the officers within each five years. So we, we're never, at that rate, we'll never catch up to, well, like, like Councilman Scott said, we only had a plus-four last year. We, we're losing officers just as quick as we're bringing them in.
So, so we, we, we've designed the budget, not just the police budget, but all budgets, based on the number of positions that we think are needed to do the work. And, you know, not only in police, but in other agencies, if there's a vacancy, we unfortunately have to use overtime to backfill that. So we think we have the number of positions set at the level that's needed to do the work. Can we fill those? I, I, I don't, I don't know. I hope we can, but I, I, based on the, based on the numbers we've seen over the last few years, the net gain has, has been pretty small, admittedly.
So, so what did finance put in the budget for overtime for police officers?
So the overtime budget is about, uh, about twenty-one million dollars. It's the same, roughly the same-
And then we're talking about adding the one hundred to that overtime?
Yeah, right.
That's what it is, yeah.
Right.
Well, tell me what the five million that was put back in, what was it for?
I'm sorry, the-
The five million.
So the five million was a, um, was a cut that was made in the eighteen budget. It was, it was the planned reduction of one helicopter in the aviation unit, and then there were some other non-personnel expense reductions. Those were not implemented this year. Um, so the decision was made to put that money, the money's being spent in fiscal eighteen.
What is being spent on?
Uh, it's, the, the helicopter was not grounded, so they will still have four helicopters in the nineteen budget. And then there were some other, um, non-personnel cuts that were not implemented during the year. So, uh, the broader, I g- I think the, backing up though, the context is, you know, when we planned this, this budget, we looked at just the facts of the last four years. And, um, and I laid them out for the mayor and her team in the fall, and the reality is, the, you know, police has overspent their budget by about twenty million dollars each year. And we felt that going into fiscal nineteen, that we had been lucky to come up with revenue surpluses, including for fiscal eighteen, which we'll be presenting to the council next week. Uh, we were fortunate to have one-time surpluses to pay for those, those deficits. I don't think that's a good fiscal practice going forward. If we're going, if we think we're going to spend the money and the intent to spend the money, um, we need to budget somewhere in the range of what that spending is. So, yes, the hundred positions, will it be used on overtime, uh, in the short, in the short-
So why didn't you just include that in the overtime? I mean, instead of saying one hundred positions, why didn't y'all just say, "We've given the police department a blank check, and they can use it however they want, whether they use it to abuse overtime," you know? I mean, you know, and, and, and why we on the, on that, using overtime? If this was in the public sector, a lot of people would have been fired. Because somebody should have been looking at those overtime records. I was a manager, and I had four supervisors, and they looked at them, and then I looked at them. And if anything was out of whack, somebody got suspended, pending discharge. Why can't that happen in the police department when people are fraudulently stating they worked overtime? The police can answer that.
Was that, did you, just-
Who's going to answer it?
Uh, you're talking about overtime abuse?
Yeah, uh, of, of the fraud of overtime. Who was responsible for looking at the overtime and why they didn't catch it?
It's within the police department.
Yeah, who was responsible for it?
He's asking who was responsible for not catching prior abuse, is that what he's asking, sir?
Who was responsible for looking at the time sheets for the officers who said that they worked overtime? Who was responsible? Who had the checks and balances in place? Somebody had to be looking at the overtime. Somebody had to be looking at it. So who was looking at it?
So our policy is that we have, um, approvers in each district section bureau, and they are sworn approvers, and they should have, they should be looking at the overtime. Um, you know, with the new overtime slip that we put in, that was put in place, it has definitely closed a loophole, um, that command saw, and that was the preauthorization of overtime. Now you have to have the overtime pre-authorized. So, um, that closes me being able to just stay for overtime without anybody saying you can stay. And I think that that was a loophole that, uh, GTTF fell into. Um, I don't think that there's any one person that you could say is responsible for-
Somebody had to be responsible.
Mr.-
Somebody had to be responsible. But, um, I'm, I'm not going to beat a dead horse, um, because I'm not going to really get the correct answer anyway. So, how much fraudulent overtime? We need a number. How much overtime was fraudulently used in the police department?
Based on your report?
So based on what we've done so far this year, and we just started, um, about the third week of March, um, it's in upwards, it could go, we, we're about, at about fifty thousand dollars, and I look for that to grow to about a hundred thousand dollars.
I don't believe it's fifty thousand, but that's okay. Um, do the pol- do the Baltimore City Police use any of the predictive algorithm for either of these two purposes that you said in six-twenty-one, um, where many police departments across the county have started using predictive algorithm to direct police patrol and to create risk assessment for citizens that come into contact with the criminal justice system? Does the police department use that? And if they're using it, is it available to the public for accountability purpose?
Good evening, Mr. President, uh, and members of council. To answer your question, we have not yet purchased the software for predictive policing yet. We are still looking at a couple of vendors right now. We have not made that decision. Um, but at the time that it does become available, we will definitely have that in, in effort of transparency to make sure that, uh, the community, as well as the council and the city government and everyone on the police department is aware of what we are doing.
Okay, um, this is on page one, on page three-twenty-five, and it's, and the volume number two. The first measure in the performance measure tablet is percentage of time patrol officers spend on proactive policing. It shows that patrol officers have increased the time spent on proactive policing from sixteen percent to twenty-nine percent. Can you describe what proactive policing is, and what do officers do when they are not engaged in proactive policing? Because I just got a call, um, about up on Bonaparte, right off of, um, I can't think of the, um, the street, where, um, they had some shootings, and ATF had did some undercover. Um, the neighbors up there have been calling and saying it has returned. So we need to get somebody up there to clean it up.
So, to answer your question, sir, the, the envision of proactive policing and the amount of time an officer spends not responding to nine-one calls, or backups, or things of that nature, what they should be doing and what they are doing, and what the percentages show, um, Steve Adel can talk about how they came up with those percentages, but it's all based off the calls for service that come into that district. And not just the calls for service, what type of calls for service they are. Because just because one call for service comes in, it might be a call for service that allows m- more than just one officer to handle that call for service, which takes multiple officers out, which then shortens their time. So I'm not exactly sure, and Steve can touch on that, how they came up with that number. But the goal is, the more uniform officers, the more patrol officers, the less time they will be spending on calls with, trying to reduce the calls for service, spending on calls, and then being out there, being proactive. And being proactive is be driving around in your vehicles at a slow rate of speed with your windows down, stopping, getting out, not just waving at people, but getting out and interacting with people. That is the goal, what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, well, that's what we really expect to happen, because we're not seeing that on a regular basis. They're in the cars. If you want to have police and community relation, then they have to get out and engage the police.
I agree, sir.
Yeah, because, um, I know we're to protect and serve, but we also to keep order and peace. We got to get out there and talk to people.
So what we had previously, what I found, was that the, the measure was rather subjective. So when I was going through the scorecard to look at the numbers, I was trying to come up with a different way to evaluate that measure based on what the colonel was saying in terms of being proactive. With the advent of body-worn cameras, it gave us that objectivity that we needed in order to do that. So based on the video categorization that might, one of, that one of my units does, we can go in and look at all citizen engagements, and we know which ones outside of arrest, because that would, it could be still proactive, but we exclude those, to give us a percent of our contacts that are proactive. So now we have an actual way to do that. Whereas before, it might have been just querying the different majors or the different commanders, now we actually have the BWCs that we do review, and we come up with a number based on that engagement. And we can watch the engagement, we can audit the engagement, and we can give feedback on that engagement as well.
Okay, um, if you, because I don't want this to be out in the public, we've been televised, but we need to know, um, how many patrol officers we have? How many are in each district per day? We also want to know how many police officers are out on ATIME, and how long they've been out? Because regular, um, if they was hurt in the line of duty, I have no problem with that. But, uh, when a city employee, um, get hurt even on the job, within ninety days, they have to either find another position, or they have to leave that position. And that should be the same thing for the police department, unless you got hurt in the line of duty. So, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not happy with the overtime. Ever since I've been on this council, I've been fussing about overtime. Because if we can be proactive, this is the finance, if we could be proactive, give more money to our schools, after-school programs, and those are things that can help our school system, like the arts, music, and physical education, and stop putting everything into the police department and have, I mean, when, when you put those things in place, it reduces crime. Because the kids have something to do. They want to be in the band. We don't have no, no, no instruments for our kids in our schools, like the counties have, where most of the police officers live? I'm done.
Councilman Schleifer, ask your, um, second question.
All right, so my second question is, uh, regarding the crime lab. And so, I know we use outcome budgeting, um, in the Budget Department, and so, when reviewing this year's budget, I also compared it, uh, to last year's, what new thing, projects we were looking to do, and if they came into action. Um, and one of the things that the Budget Department came out with last year was about how, as far as crime fighting is concerned, the crime lab was, you know, the most efficient and came out with, you know, had the best outcomes, um, as far as all different, uh, things going on in the police department. And so, I'm glad to see an increase in, uh, positions to support some of these, uh, crime lab positions, but at the same time, I am a little concerned about, obviously, the demand has been going up, according to the numbers, um, on page three-sixty-five, and, you know, there's also a backlog. And so I want to know what we need to do to, you know, allocate money to what's working. We all know what's, what's not working, and we know where we need to cut from, but to make sure that money is going to what is working, and how do we get rid of that backlog so that we don't have people who are committing crimes, we have the evidence for those crimes sitting on a shelf, and then they can commit another crime and get picked up, and then we still don't know that they were connected to the last crime until, you know, months later. So, I mean, what could we do, um, to make sure that as the demand goes up, you know, the days in which it takes to get things into the system is going down?
Okay, so, uh, first of all, we want to find the optimal mix of, of science versus, you know, bodies in police cars or bodies on foot. Um, we, we recognize that science is a critical need, uh, and, and that level of, the combination, combination of science and technology helps us to solve crimes. It helps the human to solve crime. Um, I'm going to ask Steve to talk more specifically about the details of, of our ask with respect to that.
All right, so based on, the, the shortest answer is based on input, um, just simple All right. So based on, the shortest answer is based on input, just simple math on national median and seventy-fifth percent of the national median, because our employees do work far above the national median in terms of productivity, you'd be looking at approximately, after this addition, approximately a hundred and seven additional positions.
Are those civilians or are those-
Civilians, yep. So though, it's all civilians. And that runs, that's across the board in all units. That's DNA, that's firearms, that's latent presence, drugs, and so on and so forth, crime scene. That's across the board. So it's not one particular spot. Because the laboratory is oftentimes misunderstood to be one thing and it's actually eleven things.
Right. I mean, so when you say a hundred and seven, what is that, what is the outcome that we then receive with, with, with that?
A meeting of input demand. So if you have, for example, fourteen thousand drug cases coming in, all fourteen thousand get worked versus six thousand.
Right.
And so on and so forth amongst different crime categories. It also enables the department to, to make a movement towards different sorts of non-enforcement activity, like assistance with public health, the, the mapping of fentanyl overdose and fentanyl distribution out in the streets. It allows you to go towards early intervention programs where if you get juveniles in the burglary process early on versus later when they've escalated crimes. So it, it starts to expand its, its purpose and function when you're able to saturate your input, so to speak.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Interim Commissioner, the service number six twenty-three on page three twenty-nine, the volume number two, has a measure for violent crime clearance rate. If we look at that measurement from FY fifteen to FY seventeen, the clearance rate has steadily declined. Can you, or a member of your team, explain why that rate is declining and, and what we're doing to get us on track to hit the target, which I believe is forty percent for FY eighteen?
Yes, sir. So first I want to talk about homicides. So homicides clearance rate is up. What we plan to do is decentralize in hopes to get a little bit more communication between the street officer and the detective. So that's our plan to, to, to raise that, that-
So what's the homicide clearance rate?
It's sixty percent.
Sixty percent? And you said by, by bettering the communication between-
The, the, the street cop and the guys that are actually in the office. Right now, we have, we have all the, the shooting detectives centralized. We have some of the other detectives also centralized. We want to get them back out to the districts so they can have that communication. Back when I was a detective, we were always in the district, communicating with the intel officers there. And I think that it'd be a lot better for them to actually be outside. Also, if you take a look at the numbers of detectives that we do have, that has slightly declined over the last couple of years.
And so have those measures already been implemented or is that something we're planning to do?
That's something we're planning to do. We've already, we've already put the robbery detectives already in the southeast district.
And are we already seeing immediate results?
I wouldn't say immediate results, but I would say that the, the, the decline started out in the beginning because we had robbery details there. But southeast is a tough task as far as our robberies is concerned. So I would say that the clearance rate hasn't, we haven't stopped robberies, but the clearance rate looks a little bit better.
Okay. Thank you. Do you have a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay. Council, Council, well, Interim Commissioner, you wanted to say something? And then I'll go to you.
Another key point that impacts that is the caseload per investigator. As he said, you know, we, we are down in investigators. However, the caseload continues to go up. That's why we are really trying to get ahead of it and, and prevent these, these robberies before they happen.
Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you. Jumping in on that, you were just discussing homicide closure rate, yeah?
Yes.
And you said it was sixty-two percent?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent?
Yes, sir.
That's up, like way up from last year, right?
Yes, it did. Well, well, a point.
How much?
I think it was fifty-eight percent last year.
Fifty-eight percent? All of last year?
I can't give you all of last year, but the total, the, the ending number was fifty-eight percent.
For closure on homicides?
Yes. Yes. It was fifty-eight percent, yeah. And just, just to talk a little bit about the, the caseload-
And the year before?
I don't have that number with me. I cannot tell you.
That was the jump. The year before was only twenty-eight percent.
Was last year the year that we started, I read a recent article about, I think it was put as putting bodies on bodies?
I read it.
Was last year the year that we began this practice in significantly increased numbers or newly practiced?
So if you take a look at all of last year's cases, and I took a look at all of them, that they close by exception, because that's, that's what the rule is.
Close by exception.
Yeah. So if you take a look at them, a lot of those detectives, I looked at, at the cases. If a person is murdered and the suspect is found to be dead or incarcerated forever, for life, then we've exceptionally closed those cases. And I don't believe that practice was maintained before y'all this year. So I, if you take a look at the cases, the cases were individuals that were shot and killed, and then the person that shot and killed them were, were later on found to be dead.
And these are closed by exception without conviction, without trial?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sir, I would also, I'm sorry, sorry.
That's all. I want to get back, I want to get back to the chair. Thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, what we're going to do is we're going to go through and have each ask one question. I'll make certain we come back through. I'm going to start with Councilwoman Sneed in the thirteenth and then, then go to the twelfth, eleventh, and that way. Please, if you can, make your question as brief as possible so we can get as many questions out as, as possible. I'm Councilwoman Sneed.
Thank you. So my question is, I know that we are short on patrols, but I'm wondering with the revamping and hopefully more officers, we can see something at night. I feel like we don't have enough officers at night for some of the things. I know during the day, they're constantly responding to patrols, but I feel like at night you may have more time. It may be just my perception, but at night you have more time to actually, I don't know, roam the district to see what's going on and to pick up and shut down things that are happening. Is, is that a correct statement or can you elaborate on that a little more?
So, so we, we try to establish our deployments in patrols around the crime data, right? So those times where, where crime is highest is, is when we try to, again, deploy those assets so that we're having the greatest impact. And then obviously during the lighter times, because we do have limited resources, we have to deploy to a lighter level. But we, we really do go out of our way to target those specific high crime times with, with the deployment of our personnel.
So, because my, it seems as though a, a lot of folks in the district, especially our seniors, they're not calling nine-one-one, but they're texting and calling me saying this is going on. And I'm like, at night, there should be more patrols around to see some of the things that they're seeing, because that's a lighter time. It's not during the day, but it's at night and they're looking out their windows and they're hearing things. And I'm like, and they're, the, the first thing they say is, Shannon, the, the eastern district is right down the street from me. They should be seeing this. I'm like, so that's, I guess that's what I'm looking for, for someone to respond to those type of, they're just doing normal patrols.
Yep.
Good evening, Councilwoman Sneed. Great question. So first, many of our assets are actually deployed in the evening hours, specifically up till around two AM. So a couple of things happen during those hours. We know that that's when we have more increased calls for service, which take police officers through various calls. But most of our discretionary, slight discretionary resources that we do have to include the tenth district and the mobile metro units and the foot officers are deployed specifically during the times when we have the most calls for service and in our most problematic areas. So officers are out there. I would just have your constituents to please contact nine-one-one because that gives us a barometer of what the, what's going on in every community. And in this way, we can deploy as necessary based on what we're seeing and what we're hearing.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Stokes.
Commissioner, and we talk about recruitment in terms of officers, but I never understood why police department never talk about recruitment for forensic scientists, because every young person don't want to be a police. And I've walked, been over to the police station and watched those persons who went to school in terms of forensic, forensic scientists and how that can be incorporated with the police department, having a program for high school students, especially at Dunbar, so they become forensic scientists. Everybody don't want to be a police. My other piece is, and I said it to Commissioner Davis, to Susan, I mentioned it to you, a lot of our seniors are scared. We have seniors sent us all the way through the city, and I don't understand why your CRCs don't have community meetings at those senior buildings. They would love to see y'all in the building. You know, they scared. They not, they not going to come out when it get dark. And I said it to three police commissioners. Nobody seemed to take and understand, if you're going to build a relationship, we start with our seniors and our young people. So when is that going to happen? Can it happen? Is it hard to do? Because we can give you, council people can give you a list of the senior buildings that have community centers. So we can start doing that. That's so important for our young, for our seniors in the city.
Yeah. Councilman, I, I completely agree with you. It's, that level of engagement is so important to, to, my strategy's always been important to me as, as an individual and as a professional. You're right. I mean, we do our CRC meetings generally in police headquarters. I am excited, more than excited, about getting those meetings out into the community, particularly if you are, if you will identify those senior citizens' homes, we will schedule meetings in them.
I think the rest of, my colleagues will probably could send that information to you, but I'd like to see that start. And when are you, we're going to start recruiting young people to be forensic scientists? I went over to your department and everybody's not a police. And I said this before, so can we start talking about that, how we make that work in terms of high school students being involved to have a career?
Yes, we do a lot of collaboration with different high schools. We'll do more. If, if we have any suggestions, pass them to us, please. But in terms of our recruitment, we just had a forensic scientist list open and close. It had three hundred and seventy-eight on it after two weeks. Our crime lab techs, which are also our crime scene that works in the forensic sciences, usually over five hundred. We have a few hundred on our crime lab assistants. So in terms of recruitment, when we put it out, it goes out on Twitter, it goes out on Facebook, it goes out on LinkedIn, and it goes out on, on the webpage. And then, and then it also goes out on governmentjobs.com.
Can it go to the council people so we can, we have high school students in our district?
Oh, yeah.
So we can help recruit them also, because I've never seen a list before.
Yeah, no, definitely will. And then on top of that, direct any high school advisors or counselors or constituents to us and to me, and we work with them individually about the, what they need to do. And, and there's a number of local universities, University of Baltimore, you know, in Baltimore specifically is one very local one, that does forensic science programs in the community college, City of Baltimore, and, and some other community colleges with the, with the core science coursework. Like, we can help guide all of them to the place they need to be to get on board.
And, and share that with the principals at the school. So when you got young people coming into high school at the ninth grade, if they want to be forensic scientists, they know what classes they have to take.
It's an incredible career, so I don't blame them.
And then they got to go to college, at least they have some knowledge of what they have to do.
So if we can make sure we get that information. Councilwoman Middleton-
Definitely.
Thank you. And thank all of you for your service. I guess my question is kind of twofold. I, I know, noticed in the past five years, six years or so, juvenile crime has steadily increased, just car thefts, all kinds of different things with juveniles. And under service six twenty-four target violent criminals, we spend millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars on drug enforcement and only a very small amount on juvenile diversion, at-risk violent intervention things. We have, you know, we have a, a number of people that, and young people that are on parole and probation. We know a lot of these people resort back to criminal behavior. And, you know, the, the average person looking at this, we just wonder why so small amount of money is, is spent on, on, you know, trying to get these young people corrected, their behavior focused in the right direction. Why is so much money spent in just the drug enforcement and not just trying to get to the meat of helping juveniles?
Okay, so I'm going to ask Colonel Russell to chime in in a second. But one of the things that, that, one of the problems that we see with respect to the, the crime fight is that it's, I, I see a feeder system. In my thirty-four years in law enforcement, one of the things that I've recognized is that it's a, a multi-dimensional approach to solving the problem, right? And I'll say it again, it's just not putting people in jail. And, and I get that. But one of the issues that I've, I've seen is the fact that as we engage kids, we need to prevent them from aspiring to, to become, well, let's say juvenile delinquents. We need to try and prevent them from becoming adult criminals, okay? Part of that is dismantling and disrupting these major criminal enterprises that operate in our neighborhoods. And along those same lines, as we're doing that, the, the, the folks that live in these neighborhoods still deserve to be protected, right? So it's, it's sort of a quagmire. I certainly recognize the need to engage in different ways, but I also recognize the need to have a robust program with respect to going after those folks that are, you know, pulling triggers in the community and selling drugs in the community. Melvin, you want to talk about some of the initiatives?
And it takes money, takes money to do that.
Yep. Yes, thank you.
Good evening also. Councilwoman Middleton, I'll just tell you that we do, under the Commissioner's toolage, we do run a, what's called an at-risk camp. We call it something else, Love You to Life Camp, but it is something that we work in partnership with DJS. We work with school police, the schools, and even some community laypeople who run youth organizations, nonprofit youth organizations, where we identify some of the most at-risk kids across the city. This is our third year doing it. It, it happens at the end of the summer, two weeks, one week before they go back to school. We take fifty young people from grades eight to eleven, and we take them off-site. So this year, it would be a week long. Up until now, it's been four days, three nights. It's a week long. They don't know who we are, because we're all dressed down in just counselor t-shirts.
How much money do you spend on that?
So all of this, all of this is paid for by our community partners. It usually takes us about twenty thousand dollars to take care of the entire cost, meals, stay, everything, the giveaways, everything we do with these young people. And I will tell you that these kids come in fighting, cussing, and everything else, even on the counselors. But by the end of the day, because they're getting detoxed from electronics and everything else, because all that stuff is taken away from them, by the end of the camp, we finally reveal who we are by jumping out in these uniforms. And all of a sudden, the kids, they do get angry, they do get upset, but at the same time, they're laughing and they're crying and they're very appreciative because they have been transformed. These kids go back to be peer-to-peer mentors and ambassadors in their communities, in their neighborhoods, in their schools. And, and because we, the Commissioner allowed us to go to Morehouse School of Medicine this particular year, we're going to end up getting another ten thousand dollar grant so we can do the follow-up piece even more productive than we've been doing. Because we want to meet with them, not just once a month afterwards, but every single week, and doing activities with them and making sure they stay on par, because their grades go up, they're no longer failing out of school, absentee level drops down, suspension. It's a total one eighty with these kids and we want to keep that going.
I still want to know how, why so much money is, millions and millions of dollars are spent on the drug enforcement piece and not, you know, for juveniles and not, it's the, it's the money piece that, you know, the average person will look at, thirty, forty million on drug enforcement, and you turn around and it's just two, three hundred thousand on, you know, explain why. We need more money in helping and stopping the folks that are doing the continual rotation of-
Councilwoman, if I could just add a little bit-
Jim, if you can give a concise answer to that?
I would just say that the police department is just one agency that exists in the government, obviously. And our primary responsibility is with people, with people at the immediate moment in time, which involves those folks who unfortunately are, are behaving inappropriately a lot of ways, a lot of times. But other city agencies, other stakeholders, including all of you, are doing things that are essentially other parts of the menu from beginning before the crime, so the prevention side of things, to where the acute activity happens, which is where we are, and then after the crime, which we're also trying to do that as well. But for example, ROKA is something I think that Drew Vetter probably talked about earlier today. That is addressing exactly what you are talking about. That is coupled with what we do. And so if you, if you look at it in a bigger picture, it's kind of the way I think it, it lends it, it needs to be looked through a little bit. That's what I would-
Okay. Council President wants to dovetail on that. We're going to move on.
Yeah. The Council Vice President is absolutely correct. That's a lot of money. And think about it this way. There's a fail- And think about it this way, there's a failed war on drugs and always have been for the longest time. Think if you took that money and created jobs for all of those guys who are out there selling drugs. They don't want to sell drugs. They tell us they don't want to sell drugs. But they have families to take care of, there's no excuse. And I tell them, that's no excuse. But think if we redirected that money and create jobs, because the war on drugs is a failed war. It's been a failed war for over forty or fifty years, and we're still wasting money on the war on drugs instead of putting people to work, restoring communities and things like that. It just don't make sense. We just need to look at how we can redirect that money to create jobs.
And just an example, I get calls periodically from gentlemen that get out of prison and they have a wife with four or five kids at home, and they will plea on the phone with me, "I don't want to resort back to selling drugs. I can't find a job. I can't, you know, what, I have this record." What, how can we help them? And these are, you know, these are young people that are like between the ages of twenty and twenty-five, that got five or six kids. So, they're like pushed back into doing, you know, illegal activity to make ends meet. Somewhere along the line, we have to capture those people, you know, to help steer them in the right direction, and it takes money.
I get it. You know, look, obviously, resources are limited all over the place. Again, I recognize that this requires a multi-dimensional approach. Colonel Russell was just telling me about a reentry program that we're involved in. Without having to go into any, you know, diatribe of a description, what I'll say is the fact that we do recognize that that multi-dimensional approach means that we're going to continue to look at other things. And as we can aid other agencies in being sort of a force multiplier through our expertise, we'll do that, and I completely get it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Colonel Russell, thank you.
I'm going to Councilman Henry. Please, colleagues, ask your question, or I'm going to intervene, because everybody's got questions that they want to ask. Ask your question, wait for a response, and let's keep moving.
Okay.
Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I will say, with all due respect to the President and the Vice President, I mean, we've talked, some of your staff knows I feel this way, I would gladly cut a hundred million dollars from your department's budget and spend it on other things that I believe would reduce the root causes of crime and reduce your department's burden by far more than twenty percent. But I don't know that the political will is there to do that. I do know that it's unlikely to expect you or anyone in your position to be the one to suggest that. What I would ask is that if we get to the point where there is the political will to transfer money out of the police department and move more of it into reducing the root causes of crime, I would ask, I think the most we would ask for someone in your position is to not throw us under the bus in doing so, because we are actually trying to help your department. But I'm supposed to be asking a question. So, this question is kind of, I think, for your financial person and for our budget department. It starts with praise. I really appreciate the fact that on page three twenty-seven of the budget book, under the expenditures by activity for police patrol, you have broken out what used to just be general street patrol into a number of different categories, including individual districts. I think that's great. I think that's a helpful tool. It does raise questions about the disparities between the districts in terms of funding, but I don't have two questions, so. The question I want to ask is, could we, as a deliverable, could we get that same breakout by activity for the salaries and wages for permanent full-time funded positions in that same service that's on the next page? It's a question that's related to the Council President's question. He's looking, it sounded earlier like he was interested in being able to tell the difference between actual positions in the budget book and actual people who are out working. I'd like to see that same information, but I'd like to see that broken out by activity.
Marguerite, did you get that? And so, have you asked your question?
I think that if that is, if that is good?
Sure, yeah, I can respond. We can do that. The exercise in the budget that we did this year was trying to match up, I mean, first is the challenge, trying to match up who's actually working where and reflecting in the budget. Now, that changes, people get reassigned or moved all the time, but the exercise was done to try to assign people by district. That's why you see a little bit of disparity, because some districts might happen to have a little bit more senior person or less senior person, but we can give you the list of...
Yeah. Mr. Vice Chair, the reason I asked that question is I'm hoping that that will reveal which district doesn't have a major, because there's only eight majors listed in the patrol under salaries and wages for full-time funded positions. So, I'm just wondering if that will, that will come up at that.
So, does somebody, and before we move to the next question, can somebody answer the question, does each district have a major?
Yes, sir. Each district has a major. One of them is acting, so theoretically, you wouldn't see that under the filled position because they're an acting major.
Ah.
But each district has a major, each district has a captain. They are both filled with a commanding officer and XO.
I don't mean to be persnickety, but I would think that we would just say in the budget that there's nine majors, because there should be a major for each district. I'm just throwing that out there. In the same way that we have positions that aren't filled with humans at all, we could have a position that's being filled by an acting major, just.
Thank you, Councilman Henry. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi.
How are you?
I'm great. Prefaces, I cast a vote against the previous police commissioner, because he didn't answer questions when I asked him, when some of my colleagues asked him. Some of those were in here in the hearing. Some of them were in private, because I wasn't on the committee, the actual committee. So, one of those questions that I asked privately and didn't get an answer to was because the rank-and-file, the Budget Bureau, the FOP, command staff, everybody sees this staffing shift schedule in the contract as a problem, not just financially, but to rank-and-file officer morale, because they're coming on for a ten-hour shift and working fifteen. And I said, you know, basically, as a cabinet member, as not just somebody that looks down in their agency, but looks across the board as a steward of the city's best interests, when are you just going to say enough is enough? This thing is too harmful to the city in too many ways, we're just not going to honor that shift schedule anymore? And he didn't have an answer. That's to set the stage here. That's because that's been the narrative. The reality is that that's a shift schedule that requires, I think, twelve, twelve-hundred-and-thirty people in order to meet it? That makes, that means we have enough people to cover every shift every single day to do patrol properly in all nine police districts, fully staffed, even accounting for people on their H-days. We have not twelve-hundred-and-thirty or twelve-hundred-and-fifty or whatever it is, but one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four officers in the section of the budget for patrol. That's officers, sergeants, and lieutenants. That's what, like, one lieutenant to every five sergeant, one sergeant to every five officer, something like that, something like that? We have one thousand eight hundred and twenty-four officers budgeted in the patrol section here. And when I talk to rank-and-file and when I talk to command, yesterday, there were four hundred and thirty-five officers scheduled on shifts citywide for all three shifts, four hundred and thirty-five. And when somebody else in Central said last week that we only had six hundred people actively doing patrol citywide, I understand how we're racking up overtime. And just last year in January, the department claimed that it had nine hundred and ninety-nine officers doing patrol, but the FOP, who I normally have no terms for agreement with, said that the number was actually more like seven hundred. If we've only got, let's say it's four hundred and thirty-five, let's say it's six hundred, let's say it's seven hundred, let's say it's nine hundred and ninety-nine, where are all these other officers who are actually budgeted here in patrol? Why aren't they actually on patrol? Why aren't we actually scheduling people? I'm done with this narrative about the shift schedule being the problem. We have the officers. We're just not putting them where they need to be in order to work the shifts, so that we're not racking up overtime. What's going on? This is crazy.
All right, Councilman, the number that you referred to, I'm sorry, one thousand what?
One thousand eight hundred and twenty-four. That's the number of officers, sergeants, and lieutenants in this budget book under patrol.
So, they're, if they're budgeted, we don't have the bodies. We don't have the bodies in patrol?
Based on, I'll go to a different source then. On the BPD website today, as of August first, twenty seventeen, staffed, August first, twenty seventeen, it says budgeted personnel, three thousand three hundred and forty. Four hundred and eleven of them are staffed civilian personnel. Two thousand five hundred and fourteen are staffed sworn personnel. That left four hundred and fifteen vacancies, I think, is what that number comes out to. Four hundred and fifteen vacancies. That was in, so those are budgeted, but vacant, four hundred and fifteen positions. I'm looking right here at the BPD website, and it says, "We have two thousand five hundred and fourteen staffed." And I'm looking at a budget right here that says, "We've got budgets, we've got a budget for one thousand eight hundred and fourteen." Let's just say it's one thousand seven hundred and fourteen. Let's say it's one thousand six hundred and fourteen, since we all know that you have ninety-two vacancies already and there's a hundred other vacancies thrown in this book willy-nilly. If you got sixteen hundred people right now, and, and we got a shift schedule that only requires twelve-hundred-and-thirty, where are those people going, except for the shifts where they're needed in order to do the work that the evaluation that we had done in order to create that shift schedule says this is where they need to be? Where are they instead of shifts?
Councilman?
Can I clarify one thing? So, I think, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, the number that they're referring to about the number of people they need is officers. So, also, what's listed in the patrol budget is some of the administrative civilian positions...
No, I broke it down. I broke it down.
So, if, so, just actual police officers in the general fund that are assigned to patrol in the budget are thirteen, is thirteen forty-two? So, you have to exclude the leadership, the command staff positions, and the civilian positions. I think that brings it down some. Then of those budgeted positions, of course, there are some vacancies, so not all those are filled, as we know. I'm trying to reconcile what you're talking about. I mean, I'm looking at, there's thirteen hundred and forty-two.
There are fewer than fifty-two non-sworn positions on this page. From what I can tell, counting the captain, that's the second line on page three twenty-eight, in that first block there, there's only one sworn officer on that page, in that section. Everything else here is sworn. And when you get down to the middle of the second bunch here, it's police officer, one thousand three hundred and forty-two, police sergeant, lieutenant, officer EID, sergeant EID, lieutenant EID, police officer, there's another thirty-five, then police officer EID, police officer, sergeant, officer EID, sergeant EID, lieutenant EID. Where are they if not on shifts? And we don't, if we don't have, if we don't have four hundred vacancies, then where are these twelve hundred officers that are supposed to be on shifts to meet the shift schedule? We do not have a staffing shortage. This is a bogus narrative. We have the bodies. We have warm bodies coming to work, but instead of putting them where they need to be, we're putting them somewhere else that we feel like putting them for political reasons or something else, instead of putting them there and then making these other guys work overtime. We do not have a staffing shortage.
So, the budget, relative to the budgeted positions on the website, the creation of that website, they went with three thousand. There are four hundred and, approximately thirteen, over four hundred unfunded. It's the way that previous administrations have used that language is what I've ascertained since being here. So, there are three thousand and four hundred and something are unfunded, and that brings our total to twenty-six hundred actual budgeted positions, using the correct language, of which twenty-five hundred-ish are filled, which leaves ninety-two vacancies. So, in the actual, for buds and seats, in the whole department, for sworn, all ranks included, there's around twenty-five fifty.
And? All ranks included, twenty-five fifty.
Correct.
You're telling me that we have thirteen hundred more sworn officers of various ranks, thirteen hundred more than our shift schedule requires, and we can't put that shift schedule at full staffing?
So, then you have three hundred and fifty approximately sergeants and around a hundred and twenty lieutenants, just so you understand that.
Great. I want to know why we have thirteen hundred. Literally, we have twice as many officers sworn.
You have, well, one reason, and there can be other explanations, but one reason, you have investigations, you have X number of employees in...
I can break those numbers down, too.
Right, so when you add them all up, that's going to get you to your twenty-five hundred. Your medical issue that the President, City Council President was talking about comprises around two hundred and fifty-ish employees on the sworn side, which eliminates that number from there, so you're around twenty-two fifty there. And then you're looking at all investigations, special operations, and every other assignment in a very large police department being staffed.
You have more than enough to fill the schedule in here under patrol. In the page on patrol, you have hundreds more than you need to fill the shift schedule just among officers, sergeants, and lieutenants. They're either on patrol or they're not. And I heard yesterday from two different people, one in a civil service position and one among command ranks, that there were only four hundred and thirty-five officers scheduled for patrol across all nine districts for all three shifts yesterday. The roster and the weekly shift schedules reflect that level of staffing actually assigned to patrol.
Councilman?
So, Councilman Dorsey, is there anything that we can ask of both the police department and budget to get us the information?
Yes, I'm going to make a request.
Okay, all right.
I would like...
Hang on, Councilman.
Councilman, which is Bob?
Yeah, so I think, I think what we can do is, of the positions budgeted here, you know, clearly, some of them, you're talking about numbers of bodies available to go out on patrol, so we know that some of these are command staff. Exclude those.
And let me be clear here also, there's a culture in the department that's problematic enough that a rank-and-file officer or some, a sworn personnel that's working in administrative capacity in Central won't give me the information, because they don't want me to know or show that I got it from somebody, and command staff won't give it to me, even though they have it, because they're afraid of what will happen to them retribatively if they give me this information that we know exists. So, what I want to know is, is I would like the last six rosters from every one of the nine districts in the city. I want the last six shift schedules, not tomorrow's shift schedule or next week's. I want the last six from every single one of the nine districts in the city for patrol.
Okay.
Thank you.
And when you say last six rosters, you mean?
The last six days.
The last six days.
For all three shifts, for all nine districts.
Okay, that will have to come from...
It's just not possible that we have as many budgeted sworn officers working for this department as we have, and we cannot put enough of them into these shift schedules to not be working on overtime.
Councilman, hang on, I got a question of clarity on his request. The, these are the schedules for each of the nine patrol districts for the last six days? And is that information that's, would come from Central, like HQ, or is that something that would come from each of the nine district commanders?
Chief Patrol.
Chief of Patrol.
Patrol's office will give it to you, sir. Give you whatever you need.
Absolutely. How soon can we get that?
Monday.
Monday works.
Is that, is that good?
Yep, that works. Thank you, sir. Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Commissioner, to follow up on Councilman Dorsey and the Council President's point about staffing, can I make a request first, Mr. Chair? I know that we had a... I know that we had a staffing study done and that should be complete or near complete. If you could share that with the committee, I think that will be very helpful to us.
Sure, Mr. Councilman, I will, once it's done, but we only have it in draft form. It's very, very raw, so we'll do that.
Councilman, hang on. What's estimated timeframe for completion of that?
Michelle?
Good evening. It should be completed by September.
Is that, when you say it's in, you have a draft form of that?
It is draft. It is in rough, it is in very rough draft. Right now, there are holes. It's not ready for publication. And it would not give you an accurate picture of what is happening in the department.
We'd like a copy of the draft report. Is it for official use only?
It is.
Yeah, we'd like a copy of that, please.
I can get it to, can I also get it to you on Monday?
Yep, that's fine, and we can talk about terms of use of that and, you know, you'll have the councilman's word that that's going to be kept private. But there's too much, there seems to be too much question, there seems to be too many questions around this for us not to have more documented insight into what's going on here.
And I get it, Councilman, but the, and we're going to give it to you, but let me caution you. It's only going to create more questions because, I'll give you an example. The recommendation was to increase homicide, was to double the size of homicide, right? From 65 officers, detectives to 125, right? We know that's not reasonable. We know that's not reasonable. So I just want to caution you that you may have more questions after you see it than you did before.
I understand that, but there's also, there's also a story behind it, right? A number is a number, but there's usually a story behind it. And at least that's something that Councilman Scott and the rest of us can start to look at and try to better understand that, that story as we move forward. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. To follow up on that point, so you know that I'm of the belief that we are in an issue where how we use our resources that we currently have in patrol is more important at this point in figuring out how we do that. One, it would be great if we could finally have police redistricting, something that the department at least has committed to over the last couple of years. But also, we are allowing our patrol officers to go through too many calls, in my opinion. And I'm going to say this, I know that Councilman Dorsey has said it, I know that the council president has said it over and over and over again, where so many cities across the country are doing something just as simple as diverting calls to online and diverting them to on-the-phone, saving man-hours because we don't have patrol. We have call takers, especially if you represent Northeast Baltimore. They just go from call to call to call all day. Before, and this is for finance, before we're talking about adding positions to the police department, we should first think about how we can utilize the resources that we currently have in a more efficient manner. Can you guys talk about where we are in that process and what we can do to do that? Because we know that if any other department, if the health department asks for 100 positions just to bolster their budget, they would be told no. So can we talk about where you guys are at in the process of us using the resources that we have more efficiently?
Sure. So you and I have had that discussion. Deputy Bonaparte is going to address conceptually what we think could potentially happen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, and council members. Currently, we have, we're taking upon a project we're titling as the Call Reduction Plan Initiative. On our preliminary research and through certain calls that we feel as though police officers may not actually have to respond, that the 911 center could simply divert these calls whether to it's the mobile app, to the telephone reporting unit, online, or actually going into a district itself. So we've identified, based on the numbers just off of last year, that we think that we're going to be able to reduce an response, officer to respond to a call by around 300 and I believe 14,000 calls. Okay, so that, that right there will free offices up to do more proactive and more community engagement and things of that nature there. The service doesn't change in terms of those incidents being reported. So that's an important thing to know. In addition to that, I think that the total man-hours that we were seeing preliminarily also is around 100 and something thousand hours of man-hour service. So when you build that in, that certainly is going to give us a little bit more flexibility. It's going to have cars and patrolmen more visible and doing proactive policing things that we need to do. We are actually, based on our assessment, we had some preliminary numbers. I don't think I have them here with me, but we, essentially, we're operating as though we have over 3,000 police officers in this agency and we don't. The calls for service numbers are increasing, or they're around average, but I think they increased last year. And in order for us to keep up with that, going back to Councilwoman Sneed's remarks earlier, when you're not seeing officers because there are different calls and things of that nature, we're hoping that this initiative here, once it's instituted, will be able to have offices more in the street and more available to the community.
Thank you. And just for the benefit of my colleagues, just a reminder that we, a few years back, well, some of my colleagues were here, we helped them get a system that actually calculates the man-hours and the dollars saved for every report that they take online or over the phone.
Thank you.
Councilman Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Councilman?
Yep. I'm going to pick up where both the president and vice president of the council were a little bit earlier, which is asked your now predecessor whether he would end the war on drugs in Baltimore. And by that, what I meant was, I think we have moved past the point as a society of seeing drug addiction as an issue of criminality. I hope we've sort of started to understand that addiction is a health issue, that it's a mental health issue, that we have a public health crisis around addiction and that spending a whole bunch of your resources policing it is not only immoral and wrong, it's also expensive and not fiscally responsible. And yet, like the vice president said, like the president said, it still seems like we are spending a lot of resources policing drugs. And I know that is a large part of your background and I fully understand that. But same question to you. My interest is seeing a reduction in violence and of course, seeing a reduction in corruption. Where are you on sort of moving force away from policing drugs toward just a focus on reducing violence? Because I'm still seeing a lot of robbery, a lot of assault in my district, response times that are not good. So I'm curious where you are sort of on that trajectory.
Okay, well, certainly I recognize that not just Baltimore, but the entire country is in the throes of the worst drug epidemic in our history. If you look at the level of violence that we're experiencing, drugs is contributing to a big part of that, right? I can't tell you the number of robbery crews that are out robbing drug dealers or home invasion crews that are invading homes of major drug dealers. So the lack of enforcement of our drug laws won't stop violence, not at all, in my opinion. It'll, it'll only increase the level of violence because you have, and let's be candid, in Baltimore, you have a drug market that's one of the preeminent drug markets in the country. You've got the highest purity rates for heroin at the lowest prices. That's a very, very dangerous combination. That, to me, denotes a market and a demand that's essentially off the charts. So if you're saying, if you're asking me if I'm willing to stop enforcing the drug laws, I'm just not willing to do that, sir. I think, having grown up in East Baltimore and having-
That's not, to be clear, that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, in terms of enforcement, in terms of our manpower, I would like to see more focus on violence, less on drugs.
And I get that, absolutely. We will certainly deploy the resources, violence is a top priority. Let me just say that. It's the top priority. And we're deploying our resources along those lines. But also recognizing that drugs is contributing a lot to that violence.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and to your staff. My apologies if this has been asked before. I had a community association meeting that I could not get away from as much as I tried. So my apologies for being late to all of you and to my colleagues. But I asked this to your predecessor and also wanted to throw this back out there, that one of the things I'd like to absolutely see changed in the department is where officers who are genuinely doing the right thing have mechanisms in place and a culture in place that they can self-root out bad officers, right? One of the things that we've found and to be true is that that culture did not exist for a long time, where people felt that they could say something. So the folks who are coming to clock in, clock out, and do their jobs are turning to blind eye to things like activities that we know have taken place with the Gun Trace Task Force and other cases in recent memory and in the past. And what I want to ask is, there's sort of three questions, but they're all on the same line. What systems are you putting in place to identify officers engaging in unconstitutional policing? What systems need to be in place to root that out? And also, who among us and your staff has been tasked to implement those systems to root out officers who are not doing their jobs in a constitutional manner?
Okay, so let me first identify Chief Calley. He presented earlier. He's the chief of OPR. But let me tell you what, talk about the programs that we're doing briefly. So, and let me just go back. In 1984, I joined the police department. Back then, it was a different department. I'll be very candid with you. There was accountability on the street amongst officers, pure accountability is what I'm referring to. And we didn't have the types of problems that we're seeing today. One of the programs that we're adopting is called EPIC. Ethical Policing is Courageous. It's a program that originated in New Orleans. It is a peer intervention program. Just to give you a very quick description, and what that looks like is, let's say Steve and I, we work together every day, we're on patrol. I come in one day to work, I've had a bad day. And he says, "Hey, what's wrong with you?" "Hey, maybe I had an argument with my wife." Well, that domestic call that we respond to that day, maybe I should step off the line and let Steve handle it, right? But if I do decide, well, I am going to handle the call, and that call turns into, let's say, a discourtesy, Steve would have the responsibility and the duty to intervene, to intervene with me with that discourtesy. If I accept that intervention, it does two things. It mitigates my punishment going forward, but it also prevents that activity to maybe rise into a level of use of force, right? The program was hugely successful in New Orleans. I would really invite you to take a look at it. It's called Ethical Policing is Courageous, New Orleans EPIC. And it's something that we're very, very excited about. But it also holds a level of accountability up and down the chain. So a line police officer on the street would have the ability to intervene with me as the leader of the organization if I'm doing something in the line of duty that I shouldn't be doing. It's, we're very, very excited about it. I hope that answered the question.
And if you could share that information with the committee?
Sure, yep.
Any research and data on that program would be helpful. The last thing, and I'll just, this is sort of a yes or no. The, my understanding was that the use of polygraph was being implemented. Is that still the case in the department?
Yes, so that's a part of our integrity assurance program. We started it in OPR or Internal Affairs. Everybody in Internal Affairs has taken a polygraph and that affected that was that we lost three people. Two sworn, one civilian. We then posted for that, for those positions. So we're getting people that have already taken a polygraph and we're onboarding them into Internal Affairs. The other part to that is, we've now moved that, that polygraphing effort to evidence control. So everybody having contact with evidence in evidence control is being polygraphed. Anybody who's working a drug unit, a gun unit, or anything to do with high-value seized or recovered monies will have to take a polygraph. The folks that are in our inspections program, the command inspections program, have to take a polygraph. They just finished taking theirs within the last week or so. So it's going to permeate the department. And then, of course, when you're hired to come on the job as a sworn officer, you have to take a polygraph. I took one myself when I took this job.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President?
Yeah, this is my last question. Well, it's not a question, it's just a statement. The police department got a, I call it a good boy, good girl network with retired officers filling positions that belongs to Cub. And how they get around it, they do six months, and then they keep renewing six months. Would you take a look at that and stop that practice?
Absolutely.
Okay, because those jobs will go to civilians. Because if they still want to work, they shouldn't have retired.
I'll certainly take a look at it. I've had actually one meeting with Cub and we're scheduled to meet with them in the near future.
Yeah, because they're union positions. Thank you.
Councilman Pinkett? Councilwoman Sneed? Stokes? Middleton? Yeah, I'm coming. Burnett? Or, I mean, Henry, as I looked at you and said Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening.
Good evening.
So the next question I had is about the confiscated assets for neighborhoods program. It's a grant program that has been on the books for 10 years. It was an issue that came up on the campaign trail when I was first running for city council. The idea behind it is that every year, we confiscate assets from people who are arrested, and if they are found guilty, we keep that money. And that money goes into the general fund. What I was told 10 years ago was that there is an informal understanding and agreement that that money, while it's in the general fund, is part of the big chunk of the general fund that gets allocated to the police department. And so if I wanted any of that money, the money that was confiscated from criminals in districts of the city, if I wanted any of that money to go back to helping the districts, it would have to, it would require the police commissioner to voluntarily agree that some of this money should be allocated to this program. I have spoken to several police commissioners over the last 10 years about the potential benefits of promoting a program whose sole purpose is to provide grants to community-based organizations that want to do public safety and crime-fighting activities in cooperation and conjunction with the Baltimore Police Department. For a department that is making such great efforts to reconnect with the community, this would seem to be a slam dunk and an easy decision. Yet, no police commissioner has actually made it happen in a given budget year to fund this grant program, which would be run out of the mayor's office of criminal justice. So the question I would ask is, would you like to be the police commissioner that actually makes this program happen?
Councilman, let me get clarification on it. Okay, if you're talking about monies or assets that were seized yet forfeited federally?
No.
And they go through the asset forfeiture fund?
Nope. That's a separate, that's a separate issue. What we're talking about is when, you know, one individual drug dealer is caught and he is charged and he has 450 bucks in cash on him. If he is found guilty, that $450 does not go back to him. That $450 stays with the city and it just goes into the general fund. And so what I was asking for 10 years ago, continue to ask for, is not asking for all of it, but if 10 or 20% of that could go back to community-based organizations- of it, but if 10 or 20% of that could go back to community-based organizations that are trying to work with the police department to do positive community building activities that fight crime and reduce violence, can we help them?
Commissioner, I'm gonna jump in and answer this for you. We held three hearings on this in the Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee in the last year. Councilman Stokes introduced a resolution on this. We had beyond exhaustive dialogue on this issue. Chief Gillis can speak to this, as can Mr. O'Dell. We still have that resolution open. Councilman Stokes plans to request a date for a follow-up hearing on that. Is that correct, Councilman? And I hope that you will, I don't believe you were at the previous three hearings when we discussed this. I hope that you will join us.
I appreciate that in complete candor, and I'd like to think I don't do this very often, but I put a lot of work into going to the hearings that got the bill passed 10 years ago. It's in code. This isn't a resolution. This isn't asking, this isn't, this isn't saying, we really think you should do this. It's actually in the law that we're supposed to be doing this program. It's been part of the code now for 10 years, but it hasn't been funded by the administration. And when I've reached out to the mayor's offices over the years, they wanted to hear from the police commissioner that this would be something that the police commissioner wanted to do.
It's certainly something I'm willing to consider.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilman Burn, wait, we're going backwards. Oh, yeah, and you're at the end. So, Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, it's me again. The Service 624. This is the one where we've got targeting violent criminals. Is this the one? Yeah. FY17 actual, 21% percentage of arrests that include a felony charge. The target this year isn't even half-successful, right? And the target for the coming year isn't even half-successful. We must have pretty low expectations of the unit, or of the area where these units that keep racking up lawsuits for this city actually resides, right? We paid out more than $10 million in police lawsuits in recent history, mostly coming at the hands of plainclothes officers. And we got $43 million going into this unit where that's happening. Going into this where we've got one, one civilian position in there. 294 sworn personnel in here for $43 million in the area where, that's a pathetic rate. I mean, basically, what this is telling me is that the people that we think, these are the ones that are going to make the really big differences in the city here, these are the ones that are going to get the big bad guys with guns doing all the crime. Only 21% of them, the other 79%, those arrests are misdemeanor petty crimes. That's a lot of money to be spending, $43 million for 294 people to basically get nowhere near.
Councilman, I think we get the point. Is there a question around the data, or is that just a statement?
Why on earth are we still funding this when we've got 1,800 other officers' positions for patrol, and we could just add this to them? Now we've got 2,000 positions that we can fill that patrol shift schedule with that only requires 1,230 people.
Okay, so let me start by saying, first of all, we don't target misdemeanor violators for this. These are, these are.
Yeah, but what you're saying is that this is.
Councilman, let him finish.
We don't target misdemeanor violators, right? So the number that you refer to, the number you see here are felony violators. I don't, I don't know. I mean, that's, the effort, this effort is targeting the worst of the worst.
It's targeting, but it's not meeting that target at all. FY17's actual results were that 21% of the arrests were for actual violent or felony offenders. The other 70, the other 79% must have been just misdemeanor, low-level offenses, petty crimes. The others, what else am I supposed to conclude?
All right, let's let him answer.
Yeah, so what I need to add to that is, so far this year, we've indicted 271 people, right? So that is 28% of all arrests. So my section targets violent offenders. We do not target misdemeanors whatsoever. That's not the job of that section.
I understand that. And what I'm saying is, despite you targeting them, that's not who you're getting. That's what, that's not what this number, that's what this number is telling me, is you can target whoever you want, but the felony arrests you're making only make up. 21% of the arrests that you're making, everything else then must, everybody else that you're arresting.
Councilman, please give the man an opportunity to answer the question.
So, Councilman, that's just my section alone. So I think that if you ask that same question to patrol, they're going to give you a number, another number. But that's my section alone. Again, so far, since.
Councilman, please, Councilman, please allow the man to finish the answer to your question.
Anti-crime section. So we've indicted 271 people so far this year. So that's our job. Our job is to attack the at-risk individuals of this city. But if you take a look at patrol, patrol is going to give you a different perspective because that would encompass misdemeanor crimes. That's not my job to target misdemeanor crimes.
Mathematically, they're talking about that total being out of all arrests in the whole department. This service is not the whole department.
Right.
So his contribution of felony arrests is significant, but as a whole, it's a percentage. So that doesn't, that's not reflective of, like, of all his arrests, 40% or whatever the number is up there is not what his number is. That's of the whole.
And the reason why it's dropped, as you can see, from 15, 16, 17, is because my section doesn't have that many people in it, like it did in 15. The numbers have changed.
Bob, we gotta do something about this book. These targets just don't make sense. I mean, the targets, the performance metric here is clearly for targeting violent criminals. It's on page 332 that's headed Target Violent Criminals is where you have the performance metric that says number of arrests that include felony charge. I have only to conclude that that's associated with Service 624.
And the agency is responsible for updating those performance measures, so they'll have to follow up on that, on that item. We're publishing, but the agency produces the measures, updates the targets and the actuals each budget cycle.
All right, so you're saying that this page here, this information based on attempts to target violent criminals, they're hitting 21% based on their own statement? That's what's in our budget book? That's what I have to go on.
So one of the jobs of City Stat as well is they're working with each of the agencies, in particular BPD, in revising these measures and different measures for that purpose and for that reason.
So, all right.
I'd like the rosters for.
Yep, hang on, and we're gonna get your request. This is, Bob, you're saying that the agencies come up with the performance measures?
So, the agencies have, over time, come up with the performance measures in conjunction with City Stat.
And they feed you the data and you put it in the book.
They feed us the data, so as part of the budget proposal each year, they update the actuals from the prior year and they update their target.
But they come up with the performance measure that they want to use, right?
I would say, I would say the agents, it's a joint effort with the agency and City Stat with input from BB Mar.
But it's not budget.
Yeah, no, it's not our measure.
Right, I'm trying to get you out of the conversation. You're out of the conversation.
I mean, we certainly have input into it, but it's a joint.
You want to get out of the conversation, Bob. This is your performance measure. There's a problem with this performance measure. Have you talked with City Stat about this yet?
Yes, yeah, so we're in the process of changing a great many of them.
When is that expected to be completed?
This coming fiscal year, so the next budget book.
This month, end of 2018.
They're starting it in.
June 30 of 2019.
It's been ongoing. The big push from them starts in July. My understanding is by October is likely when everything will get solidified.
So, we had some issues with City Stat the other day in terms of what the measures were, and I don't, I'm not going to speak for my colleagues, but there were clearly issues with that. And we heard that this was already ongoing. Councilman Scott, we heard this was already ongoing at BPD?
Actually, no, Mr. Chair. BPD was one of the agencies where we heard from Sustainable Solutions that there was no targets, and then later, yes, there were targets, but those targets were only for the VRI. So we think that, we don't know if the agency tasked with coming up with targets for agencies actually has a target for BPD.
So, Steve, have you guys met with, you have not met with City Stat yet on this? Or you're getting ready to, or you've just?
We have a few times up to this point. We have more to go.
Okay, when did you first engage with City Stat?
Probably February or March.
Okay, all right. So what we'd like is a documented timeline of your interaction with City Stat slash Sustainable Solutions. We'd like a timeframe and writing of when you expect to have that completed. And then we'd like to be able to review those performance measures once they're completed, October, November, whenever that is, prior to seeing them for the first time in the fiscal 20 budget book. Councilmembers Scott and Dorsey, does that satisfy, does that, does that take care of the information that you were seeking for irregardless of whether or not you liked the answer you received?
This question, I'm.
On that one, and then we'll come to the other.
Can you just summarize what you just said?
Yes. I've asked for a timeline of their interaction with City Stat, an estimated timeframe for completion of the performance measures, and then an opportunity for us to view the performance measures as soon as they're completed, instead of when the next budget book comes out.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Thank you. Councilman Dorsey, you had another request from before, before we move on. Please summarize what that request was.
Thank you. And to clarify, on my last request, I want rosters that have already been published, like the last six ones that have already been published. I have skepticism about whether I'm going to get altered or unaltered documentation. So I want to be clear, I want things that have already been published.
Thank you, thank you, Council.
And for this one, I want the most recent three rosters for every unit who receives funding under Service 624, the Target Violent Criminals. Any unit that's receiving funding under that, separate from the patrol stuff, I want rosters for that as well.
For the last six days?
Sure. Six days, that sounds great. Last six days.
Okay, last six days. It's the same as the last request, except it's for everything, have every unit under Service Area 624. Councilman. Thank you. Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, before I go any further, to go to your request about Sustainable Solutions, can we just add that before we pass this budget, Sustainable Solutions gives us the dates and targets for each agency that they will be having stats for this year?
So we'd like a list from Sustainable Solutions of each agency in the city and when the expected engagement date, as well as timeframe for completion, as well as statuses. So Agency 1, BPD, engagement date was February 1 of 18, estimated completion date is October 1 of 18, status is ongoing. So status could be complete, ongoing, or not yet started, or in planning, something like that.
Mr. Chair, can we add, can we add in if they're having stats or City Stat meetings with that agency? Because if they're meeting with them and don't have targets, it kind of is a moot point of meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner, I'm gonna talk about, I guess, Service 628, Internal Affairs would be the best place to talk about it. But talk about where we are in peeling back the GGTF investigations and the allegations that were mentioned by other, about other officers and some of those who are still working. And what's the timeframe for us to, do you, have you set for dealing with them? You know, this is an issue near and dear to my heart as someone who blew the whistle on overtime abuse long before GGTF to only be have it swept under the rug and then have the individuals seven years later to be mentioned in the trial. Can you talk about where we are in that process?
So there's a review that's ongoing. Chief Calley is doing that review. There's a lieutenant colonel that answers directly to him for that. We do not have a timeframe. There are a number of things, as you might imagine, that we have to go through. It's going to be a process, but I can guarantee you that we're going to get through it.
Do you think that we, like, any estimate, could it be, you think it'll be a year out, maybe six months before we start to see any movement at all?
I wouldn't say a year. It's really, really hard to say. As we, as we look at it and try to determine the exact caseload that's going to result from that entire review, it's, I just can't determine right now.
Thank you.
But I'll be more than glad to follow up with a timeframe as one is determined.
Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Commissioner, last year, I believe it was 2017, there were 17 recruits that failed scenario-based testing in the police academy. And one of the things that was concerning to me about that was, you know, we, in the consent decree, they, that is a requirement, that officers have a deep understanding of the Constitution, that they are passing the tests as quickly as possible and adequately to make sure that they know what they're talking about. What steps are being taken to ensure that officers are retested and retrained in the academy? And how often are officers that are outside of the academy also retrained and retested in those scenarios?
The director of training, education and training went to the restroom.
We're gonna come back to that question.
I'm sorry, Councilman, my apologies. He went to pick his kid up.
Okay. Well, so I have a broader follow-up. What do you, what more do you think can be done around this issue on, or making sure that our officers have a deep understanding of constitutional policing and that there's ongoing retraining and retesting after you've left the academy? What more do you think we can do there?
So, so let me just say that the, first of all, it's important to understand how detrimental the lack of constitutional policing can be. We've gone to a system where we've taken all of our, all of our recruits that come through the academy now and go to the Holocaust Museum. Because it's really, really important to understand the role that police played in what was undoubtedly one of the worst genocides in our history. So. Okay, so, go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry. All right, so, so like I said earlier, the consent decree touches just about every single section of the department. And so training is a huge component of that. So part of this first year, we are developing, editing all the policies within the department. And then, of course, once you change the policies, you have got to train them, right? Because you can't hold officers accountable unless you've properly trained them. So we have a deliverable that we're working on right now, and that is a training plan. So what does all of this new training that is required by the consent decree look like? And then, pardon me, from there, we have to create a discrete curriculum for each and every single issue area within the consent decree. So while most of the work we're doing this year on issues are policies, so we're doing policies on use of force, interacting with youth and those with behavioral health disabilities, transporter persons in custody, fair and impartial policing, stop searches and arrests, First Amendment-protected activities, sexual assault, and officer health and wellness. But this year, in addition to the overall training plan, we have to provide modules on impartial policing, stop searches and arrests, and use of force. And then next year, we will address all of the rest of, of the training. Does that, does that answer your question?
And I guess, and what's the timetable for, let me back up. This will apply to all officers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, and what's the, the timetable for implementation? Obviously, you can't bring everybody off the street at once, so how are you phasing this in?
No, that will be a part of the training plan, so, because we can't take everybody off the street to train them because we need bodies on the street. So, we have to be very intentional about that. That will definitely be a part of the in-service training that we're, you know, we already have a plan for that, kind of, officers are already being trained and in-service. So, that will all be a part of this, um, this, this kind of very, uh, specific training plan.
And when do you anticipate the plan being completed?
I gotta look at my first-year plan. I can't remember when it's due, but I can, um, I can, uh, look, uh, in a moment and just let you know.
And is that something, when completed, can be shared with the committee?
Yeah, absolutely, mhm.
Okay, could I, could we add that as a request?
You know, I, I think, you know, one, one of the things that we're required to do with the consent decree is extensive outreach and extensive inreach. Um, and we have started, um, having public meetings with, with your constituents. We are absolutely committed to meeting with you as often as you'd like. There, this is very fast-paced, there's, there's a lot that goes on every month. Um, but I'm happy to meet with you regularly so you can see these things. Um, but aside from that, we can, we can certainly, um, uh, submit them to the council.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Henry for the last question of the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually already alluded to this question, which was, um, could somebody speak to the, um, the variance in the amount of money spent on patrol salaries in the different districts? Um, it's a, it's a pretty significant range. Uh, Eastern and Western District are like in the eighteen million, whereas I think Northeastern and Southern are like in the twenty-three million dollar range.
So, um, I'm, I, we'd have to go back and look and see how many in each district. I know some of the variants could be, that when we do our salary projection, it depends on where the officer is in their career. You could have somebody that's only been here a few years.
And that's kind of what I was curious about, is how much of that is you're getting a whole lot of really young officers in the Eastern and Western, um, I'm tempted to say, because you need people who can run fast. Um, uh, or if you're, and, and then, does that mean Southern and Northeastern are getting more officers who are later in their career? Um, or is there an act, and this was also why I asked for the breakdown of positions by district to see if that salary difference is related to a, a significant difference in the number of officers assigned to the district, or if it's more about where they are in their career?
I think it's probably a little bit of both.
Yeah, and it would also be based on the, the geography of the district. I mean, that, that.
Right, Northeastern is huge. I get that. I like, like, if you, if, if, if you told me that North, Northeastern has, you know, twenty-three million dollars worth of patrol officers and, you know, Western has eighteen because Northeastern is physically twice the size, then I'd be like, okay, I can see that makes some sense. Just, or if you told me that all the officers in Southern District are like twenty years older than all the officers in Eastern District, that would make sense. But it, I would like to know which it is. And if it is a combination, if I could get some kind of breakdown to show that.
Yeah, we have, we have the backup of all the positions that are assigned to each of those activities. Um, so I, I think it's a little bit of both. Uh, I'd also just say that when we do the budget, we base that on who's assigned to each of those districts. It changes, you know, very frequently.
It's gonna play catch-up.
It's a snapshot. It's a decent snapshot. It probably has changed a bit even since the snapshot was made for the budget, but it'll give you a, a pretty good idea.
Okay, alright, so that, um, Mr. Vice Chair, I guess that would discount as an amplification of my earlier deliverable request, that when you're dividing up the positions by district, um, it come with a pros, uh, uh, analysis of the difference in the, in the total salaries.
Yeah, we'll work together on a responsible, pull the data, run it by you guys to make sure.
Okay, thank you, thank you both very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, being no further questions, um, thank you. Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Um, the. The Bratton Group did a, a, um, strategic plan that the city paid a half a million dollars for a few years ago. One of the criticisms was that the organization was very top-heavy in command-level personnel. And in looking in the current organizational chart, that still seems to be, uh, that still seems to be a problem. We've got, we're paying one-point-seven million dollars for four positions. A Colonel for Institute of Community Policing Relations and Downtown Engagement, uh, Office, uh, Office of Communications and Media Relations, we got a Captain, Chief of Public Information, and a Chief of Strategic Communications. I mean, I could go down the list here. I got a bunch of, you know, fourteen different positions here that we're paying one-point-seven million dollars for. And as I look at this org chart, we just have, it seems like we have, like, crazy top-heavy bifurcated operations here. We've got, uh, an Office of Constitutional and Impartial Policing that's got five, six different positions under it, uh, well, on one side, related to education and training, and, and Internal Audit Division, plus, uh, Inspection and Services and Integrity Division, um, plus the Office of Professional Responsibility. I don't understand why, if we have an Inspector General, that should be taking a holistic view of whether the department is in check, uh, in, in line, um, people are acting the way they should be, and we're, we're, we're steering the ship in a more constitutional policing direction. Why, why all these people aren't reporting to one person? Why we have layer upon layer upon layer?
I think he gets the question. Commissioner?
Right, so, uh, part of that has to do with conflict of interest. Uh, if the, if the IG goes out to do an audit and they detect, uh, a violation of departmental policy or, uh, violation of law, they then have to refer that to, uh, the Officer of Professional Responsibility, um, who would then take it and, and then run with it. So, that's due in part. The other part to it is, the, uh, the staffing study, uh, will, will also help give me some guidance in terms of where we, the optimal level of, of leadership that we should have at the top.
So, that, that's not part of the Bratton Study, that?
I don't, I'm not familiar with the Bratton Study. I wasn't.
We paid a half a million, okay, it's.
Mister, if I could.
Yes, sir.
Mister Councilman, if I could add about the Bratton Study, if I were you, I would take it and throw it in the trash. Uh, the Bratton Study was actually basically a political payoff. Mister Bratton is the folk, is the person who convinced the previous administration to hire Commissioner Bass. And to pay, pay back that debt, he had to pay him that amount to do a study. So, I wouldn't believe anything that comes from that.
Nonetheless, I mean, we have a pretty spread-out, I mean, this, when I look at the numbers here, uh, the breakdown of.
Councilman, I gotta ask you to get to specific questions. Questions, that's what we need. I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you. Councilman Scott?
Thank you, Miss Commissioner. This is my last question for the day, uh, something that I've been talking about over the last few years. Can you explain to me why it is necessary still for us to have a mounted unit? And I'll give a little context for that. Uh, two predecessors before you and I, we actually had it out several times over the mounted unit and once, one portion, uh, now infamously when Councilman, I mean, a Councilman Delegate Branches grandson was murdered on Nicholas Avenue in northeast Baltimore, uh, the mounted unit was supposed to be assigned to the area. But when we called and asked why, myself and the district commander, they were told that it was too hot for the horses to be out there. My response, of course, immediately to the Commissioner, and not in a nice way, was, well, what did the horses do for the thousands of years before humans invented air conditions? So, for me, I don't see how the mounted unit, for a million dollars, actually benefits the a, average citizen in Baltimore. So, someone has to explain to me why we still need a mounted unit, because I think that, we know that there's tons of other things that we could spend it on to get more bang for our buck. So, can someone rationalize for me why we still have it?
Uh, Major Court, I'm the commander of the mounted unit. Uh, what I must say is that, uh, one horse is equivalent to ten officers. When we have crowd control situations down at the Inner Harbor, we have various, uh, issues with crowd in lieu of sending out the ten officers that, as you, everybody is noticing, we are short. So, in lieu of sending out ten officers, we think, we could send out one mounted officer along with the horse. They travel in fours. One horse is, like I said, is equivalent to having the ten officers. Uh, in the budget is ninety-seven thousand dollars for care and maintenance for ten horses. And that's nine-thousand-seven-hundred dollars a horse. The horse that are being purchased are being purchased with private funds. So, therefore, is no funds coming from the city other than the maintenance and care and also using it for the location and where they're currently at. We're currently now in the process of building, or, or getting private funds to build the mounted, the new mounted stable at the BNO Railroad. So, again, we only looking at ninety-seven thousand dollars for the care and maintenance.
So, the, the, the bulk of it is in salary for the officers themselves?
That is correct.
So, do we, can you get for us, uh, a plan of how they will be evenly dispersed throughout the nine districts? Because, I mean, not to, to beat a quote-unquote dead horse, but I'm pretty sure if you ask the other eight district commanders, their response would be, well, what else does downtown need? They got every other resource known to man. How can we, how can we have the mounted unit spend equal time in all the other districts? Because I'm sure that Councilman Burnett has areas where they could use the mount, mounted unit. I know that Councilman Dorsey does. Can we get a plan, if we're gonna have it, because I personally don't think we need it, if we're gonna have it, it needs to be used for everyone and not just for downtown?
Copies.
I think Councilman Scott wants all the horses up in Bel Air Edison. Councilman Henry?
Just a quick follow-up on that, which is, have you done any internal, um, analysis on how often you need that crowd control?
We use, we use them every weekend, uh, Councilman, down at, when the clubs let out in Baltimore, in the downtown area, the mounted horses are downtown every weekend. Every special event, Fourth of July, for New Year's Eve, they're always there for the large crowds.
Okay, so, so Fourth of July and New Year's Eve, those are twice a year. The every weekend downtown and around the clubs, now we're back to Councilman Scott's point of, well, that's one place that needs them regularly, but that's not necessarily very balanced.
Well, I keep, keep it in mind that when you look at a horse, or look at the mounted unit, you have to look at the distance that they have to travel. So, one of the things we try not to do is, it is very hot. When it's hot, we do not use those horses because they come, they become, they become overheated. And when they come overheated, then they will die. What we do not want is some animal control person or someone who is an animal lover then come back at us and say, we are abusing the horses. So, we have to keep those things in mind as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I do believe that there are no further questions. Um, there's a number of document requests, follow-ups. We ask that you get those, uh, to the committee as soon as possible. Those can be emailed to myself and Marguerite Curran. Um, with that, BP, you're excused. Uh, thank you all for your service to the city and everything you do to keep, uh, folks in our city safe. I appreciate it. And normally, this would be the part where we'd vote the bill out, but we're not gonna do that tonight because, pardon? One more one?
We still have the.
Oh, I'm getting ready to do that, yeah. No, I was just doing my little thing that I do at the, the hearing. So, normally, we would vote the bill out, but we're not gonna do that tonight because there are certain agency heads that don't feel that it's necessary to show up in front of the council to justify, uh, their appropriations. So, we'll deal with that on Monday evening. Thank you all. We are now in recess, uh, this committee until Monday evening, June fourth, at six-thirty PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Council.